It is 7:30, Tuesday, January 17, 2023. We are now opening up our town council meeting for the historic town of Eatonville, Florida. This is King David Florida.
Uh, yes, we do.
Please stand before the invocation by Pastor Kristen and Pastor Nicholas.
My fallen God, we thank you once again for this day that you have made. We will continue to rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for this opportunity that you have allowed us to live and move and have our being even in this particular community of Eatonville. We thank you for the representatives, those that are in leadership position of this community, who makes decisions and choices that will be to the benefit and the advantage of the community. We pray that you continue to bless them with wisdom and knowledge and understanding with discretion to make decisions that will be beneficial for this community. We thank you for our mayor and our councilmen and those that work in this town intimately. We pray that you will continue to bless them and keep them. We also lift up every resident of this community that you continue to bless us to respect each other's personalities and properties, that you continue to help us to live in harmony and unity with one another in this community for your glory and the good of all that live in this community. We thank you for this town council meeting now where we can further be educated and updated on the state and the way up ahead of this community. We bless you and we praise you and we thank you for everything that you're doing in, through, and for this community. We ask you all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First motion is the approval of the agenda. Anyone should have it with the amended item for number or letter for the first special exception. So approval of the agenda. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Next item is citizen participation. Do you have any participation?
Uh, yes, we have two. Our first one will be Mr. Derek Bruce, Sean Myers, and George Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, residents. My name is Sean Myers, 1132 Louisiana Avenue, 301. I work with the development team on the Hungerford project. Just wanted to announce we're going to do a community information meeting at Hungerford Elementary, uh, 6:00, 7:00 p.m., uh, January 31st. Thought it'd be good to provide, uh, you know, a forum where people could ask more questions, have more time to understand the project. Um, you know, it's great we do this stuff in public, the town meeting, but it'll be nice where there's no constraints on time with it, with questions, so happy to do that.
And we're, and we're proud to do, uh, to, to do this community, uh, community listening and, and, uh, community meeting, uh, in, in partnership and in consultation with, uh, with Unity Federal Credit Union, uh, that's represented by George Williams, who's also here.
Absolutely. We're, we're proud to be a part of this initiative and we're looking forward to this, uh, meeting so that, uh, the inhabitants of Eatonville can find out some more information about this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, we have LaDwana Jordan.
I'm gonna call worse.
Pardon me for mispronouncing.
Uh, good evening, everyone, uh, councilmen, mayor, and residents. Uh, I have, I'm on my stool, my seat, so. Happy to remind myself. Um, my question is regarding the Tommy Dixon property that he's, uh, next door to the chamber. The chamber is 213 West 10th. Uh, I know that, uh, I think you're all aware that Mr. Dixon has passed. And I do know in previous meetings it was discussed that upon, um, if he shall pass, then the property, I think, goes to the town, the CRA, or who met. Um, my concern is, uh, we're having a lot of, um, unusual activity that has kind of escalated. Um, but, and I, but I will say thank you, somebody did come by and mowed the lawn, so thank you so much. That does look much better. Um, but just a concern, and I don't, not sure if the lights are on or off or whatever, or who's residing there, or exactly what does the town plan on doing, uh, with that property, like I said, with next door to you all. And also I do know in previous meetings you all were discussing, um, the chamber and the lien that, uh, is placed on the property. I'd like to, uh, if you could please get an update, uh, on the status of what's going on, uh, from your perspective. Uh, that's what we're asking them, the question from the Eatonville Chamber of Commerce. Okay? Now, how would I be notified? How, how would I know about what's going on with the property at the time? Are we going to discuss it tonight, or how does that work?
Uh, quick, for this, the property is on, in the CRA, we have a CRA meeting on Thursday in between that time. And I, it's one of the items on the agenda, so it's going to be discussed.
Okay.
And in regards to the lien, um, I don't think we have an update for you today, but I can give you a call, or, um, that's probably something that has come back for the council as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
Oh, CRA as well.
CRA.
Not that council.
So will that be discussed on the meeting on Thursday, or what, what are we doing with that?
If you let me tell you on Thursday.
Yes, ma'am.
Then I, I will give you a call in between now and Thursday.
Yes, ma'am.
So it'll be tomorrow, or before the meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay? All right.
And that is it. We have no more.
More? So now we're ready for the approval of the first reading, uh, the request for the plat revision to partially release a portion of an existing 20-foot utility easement.
You want me to read it before the presentation?
I don't, I never remember if you read it before the presentation.
I'll go ahead and read it. It's pretty lengthy. Uh, ordinance 2023-1, and ordinance of the town of Eatonville, Florida to release a portion of an existing 20-foot utility easement situated on lots 2 and 3 of Eatonville Commercial Center, as recorded in the plaque book 57, page 52 through 57 of the Public Records of Orange County, Florida, and being more particularly described as the follows, as follows. Commence at the southeast corner of said lot 2, thence north 88 degrees, 40 foot, 11 inches west along the south line of said lot 2, a distance of 45.98 feet to the point of beginning. Thence south 1 degree, 18 feet, 13 inches west, a distance of 7.43, 43 feet. Thence south 37 degrees, 37 feet west of distance of 3.19 feet to an intersection with the south line of an existing 20-foot wide utility easement, as shown on said plaque, plate. Thence north 88 degrees, 40 foot, 11 inches west along said south line of easement, a distance of 255.15 feet, thence departing said south line north, 44 feet, 33 inches west, a distance of 20.01 feet to a point on the east line of a utility easement per said plate, and a point on the north line of said 20-foot utility easement. Thence south 88 degrees, 40 feet, 11 inches east along said north line of the easement, a distance of 257.76 feet, thence departing said north line, south 1 degree, 18 feet, 13 inches west, a distance of 10 feet to the point of beginning, containing 5,146 square feet, more or less providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Great. Good job. Now turn it over to Chris Salmeri.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, members of the board, and members of the community. Uh, my name is Tara Salmeri. I'm the Town Plan Consultant. Um, tonight, um... Um, as, as you've just heard, this is really just, um, about a plat revision. Um, I've put some images so that you understand where the vicinity is. Um, it's, um, an area by the Zaxby's, and you'll see kind of the red mark. South of Zaxby's, the zoning district is MX Office Overlight. Next slide. And the highlighted blue is the area to vacate. Um, that is the Winter Park Utilities, and then you'll see to the right, as, and also in your packet, this, that came from the city of Winter Park, uh, without opposing this vacation of easement. Um, and the ordinance that were read, the importance of the ordinance is you are making changes to the plat book. So in order to make a change to the plat book, you have to have an ordinance, even if it's text changed. Um, how you review, um, a plat book change and how this was reviewed, CPH, the town's consulting civil engineer, plat department reviewed and worked with the applicant, ensured that the removal of the easement would not prohibit any, um, easements or needing of allowances of utilities for future development. And it was the CPH's recommendation, along with the city of Winter Park's recommendation to allow for the vacation of that easement. And available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well, if you had any questions for them.
I, this item is now open for discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Aaron Hickman with CHW, uh, the agent for the applicant. I just wanted to address the, the members here and let you know that I'm here to answer any questions. I've got some more graphics if you would like to see them. If there's any questions, uh, that y'all have, that might help answer them, but feel free to ask away.
All right. Well, I didn't see any questions coming up from the audience.
Okay.
So I'm going to, are there any questions from the council?
So this easement is to make, um, room or extra feet for, on the land space for a new restaurant that's coming to the area?
Do you have the picture of the slides I had?
Yeah. Okay, can you advance the...
Go to the next one.
Next one. Next one.
So, that's the, that's a Zaxby site plan that we had done back in 2017 years. And what was left is this, uh, vacant land south of the parking lot, and that platted easement is right there in green. It kind of runs right down the middle of that remaining vacant land, so that it impacts any future build out of that. If you want to put a building, you have an easement running down the middle of it. So that's the, the intent is to clear that up, to then be able to, uh, put that up for, say, older, sign, go in contract with the, the future developer.
Are there any other questions for the council?
I have, um, a couple questions. The utilities that, um, that's, 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 the, the scene is from where? The utilities, I mean, that, that parcel, right? The utilities from where?
So right now, all the utilities are run up in north and south on this driveway, and the water and connections are run off the backside, and these will remain in place, and those are where the utilities are installed? So nothing right now is in the middle of that easement? No utility is buried there?
The Winter Park controls that, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
And it's Eatonville, uh, it's the city of Eatonville, so that's something we need to deal with, as putting that water further down. I don't know what he did with apartment complex. I know a water stop at the new apartment, so I don't know if they took it past that, but it's something we need to think about, um, with the utilities when we release the easement, so, um, that's going to be another issue that we got to deal with, losing income down the road, so it's up for me to look at it for the future, just like.
I'm, I'm a very visual person, so if I am standing, and it's at the southern part, just on the behind Zaxby's, is that a hap, wooded area?
So, the...
To the north of that lake, or... What part of the...
Sorry. So the, the wooded area is back in here?
Can you do it on the other side?
Uh, let's see. So this is where it's at, it's right here in this open grass area, and it's, it's essentially a pad-ready, uh, site, the way that the engineering plans were done. This was graded out to facilitate a future build, building, but this, uh, easement got lost in the shuffle that was on the plat, and it's an afterthought that we're trying to address tonight, to get that, uh, that little section right there taken out. But like I said, all the utilities are in the ground and have easements covering them that service this, this whole complex, this whole Eatonville commercial center, uh, so there's, there wouldn't be any, uh, limitation for future connections from this future developer to connect into those, those existing utilities that are, that are in, in place.
Okay, this is Forest City Road right here, that's...
Right.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's Discount Auto right there?
Yes, ma'am.
Right? Okay.
Napa.
Sorry.
Yeah, so right between the Napa and the Zaxby's is this, this piece, and that easement runs right down the center of it. So.
Any other questions?
By, by, by baking that, what, what that does, what they do, I mean, pros and cons? I just want to see. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, the only con, the only con would be if your public works department said, hey, we have a future need to put in something that we don't already have, and since public works has not told us that, and the utilities that are needed for the property are already in the ground and covered by existing easements, it, it's essentially, we're giving up a right to put something in the ground in a location where we don't have anything and don't have any intention to put in anything, and so the answer is there is no real con. The only way there would be a con is if our public works department said, or had been in contact with another utility like, uh, Florida Progress Energy or something like that, or Duke, or whoever they call themselves these days, to say, oh, but we need to use it because we got this coming through, or something planned. Without, absent that, there's no reason for us to have it.
But we'll know that second part if, um, they make, someone makes application to build there because that's what's all those, those different municipalities, correct?
Well, at, at the end of the day, the answer is yes, but it would be to the applicant's advantage, because whatever's going to go through there that's not already there, it would be something in theory that they would need, because there are already locations for utilities to go on the property according to what's been presented.
Any other questions? All right, seeing that there are no other questions for the council? Um, waiting for motion to approve the first reading of the request for plat revision, revision to partially release a portion of an existing 20-foot utility easement.
I think we're done on that. I don't know if there was a motion.
There was not a motion or a second.
There was no motion.
There was no motion.
There was no motion.
Put your second. I mean, there's no motion.
There was no motion. She went, yeah.
Oh, I think you made it pretty quick. Okay.
I move for approval.
It's been moved into a second.
Second?
It's been moved in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Item B has been approved. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which involves the approval of town council meeting minutes. All, uh, motion for the approval?
Full.
It's removed. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. It is approved. For council decision, Zora Festival 2023 agreement between town of Eatonville and Association to preserve the Eatonville community in. But there's no, um, there's no, that's no just agreement. So there's, is there a motion to approve the agreement? It's removed. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
It's removed in a second. Um, Councilman Daniels.
So, um, I, I first off by stating that, um, again, we have a place of the Zora Festival, um, two weeks prior to an event, that we're here now to make a decision on this when I've been asking for over three or four months to have information on this. Uh, first off, I stated that this is not a reason to residents or the business owners, it's not fair, that we have to rush to something or come to a conclusion less than a week or two prior to an event. Um, Mr. Shepherd, have you had a chance to review this agreement?
No.
Okay. Page 38. I'll start there. Uh, page, um, 39. Can you give me insight, Mr. NY or whoever, um, first stands in the first paragraph, the short time, the long time, time to the science to PDC, the exclusive right to present the outdoor festival, with the fact that it's exclusive rights?
Can I take the podium? Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Well, I'd like to do, um, Madam Mayor and council members, uh, and the administration, the chief administrative officer, I'd like to talk about the process that we have used under his direction. Uh, this time, uh, the administration has had us to come to a series of meetings with the Eatonville Police Department. We have an agreement as opposed to a resolution, and we have a contract. I would like to say at the outset that the Association Reserve Eatonville community wishes to acknowledge the, the professionalism and the, uh, way that we have been working under the guidance of the administration and as well with the Eatonville Police Department. So that what you have in front of you, I think, from your package, works two things, an agreement, number one, and number two, the, um, contract that stipulates what needs to be done. Now, in terms of the, when you're, so when you're referencing the other document, uh, Councilman Daniels, you're talking about something that really was not, in other words, we didn't work under the construction of a resolution. The administration had us work under the construction of an agreement and a contract. I will say to you that in previous years, over the decades, exclusivity has been granted so that, um, we have the ability to view intellectual and creative control. I'd also like to take this opportunity, if I can, to acknowledge Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church, because frankly, without the cooperation of Macedonia, we would not have been able to actually do the, uh, festival, the outdoor festival in Eatonville. I do understand what your, your, your frustration in having this come at the time that it has. I just want to offer to you some context, because even though it has come to the council at this point, and I do want to say that the administrator, the chief administrative officer, has already identified a timeline that we are to follow going forward for 2024. I do want to say to you that as early as March of 2022, we approached, um, Mr. Jenkins at the Orlando, uh, the Orange County Public Schools to see if we would be able to use that parcel of land for the outdoor festival as we had been for decades previous. When he said that no, he would not be able to have access to that parcel because it was up for sale, that immediately let us know that we were going to have a tremendous challenge in terms of being able to accommodate what is the look of the festival. You have in front of you, and there are copies here for the audience, of the map. It has taken us months to really get that map in order, because even though you can put 10 by 10 tents on the street, they're what we call the big tents, the things that are the education and cultural heritage for K-12 people. It's about the STEM hub. It's about the make and take tent. It's about the Ford Historical Society. And without the cooperation, actually Macedonia has allowed us to use all of their lots, um, in addition to content for parking. Um, so I, I want to offer that. I do understand what you are saying. I appreciate it. I can tell you that staff has really been running full throttle to try to get this done, because as some of you may remember, in June, we had the outdoor festival, and it was, I think that we can say this candidly, it was a very humbling experience, because after three decades of telling people to come the last week in January, uh, nobody came in June. So what that has meant is that we have been trying to get ready for the January event in less than five months. I also want to say one other thing before I see the, the microphone. We are working, we really are working for 2024, which is our signature season. That's our 30th anniversary, and I'm, I'm saying this in all seriousness, you really don't know whether we're going to be able to have that outdoor festival in, in Eatonville, because right now, all, all the parking that we have, the only parking that we have access to are the Macedonia lots. And so it really means that, it, it just means that it, it is a challenge, even though there are ways that we can try to do it, but we were, we, we know, for example, we know, for example, that we are under consideration. We've passed the first test for, um, national broadcast coverage here for this, for this event, for this event for this year. And, um, it's, it's just a challenge. We don't have the inventory, and we know what happened last time when we were in the preserve. People did not like that, and we could hardly get to it.
So, can, for that to make... And, and I, I appreciate the context and context as you stated, but this is the 34th year. This is not something that just started last year, and as I stated last time, that things have been going forward. Um, and I know you said that you didn't prepare, staff did it, but you, you reviewed it, correct?
And what do you, what, what you mean? What are you talking?
Did you review this agreement?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So what is meant by the exclusive rights?
Exclusive right means that the town of Eatonville endorses this event, and it will not allow any outside vendor that has not passed our criteria to then. That is the definition that we have used with the town for the past decades.
And that's exclusive permits too, correct?
That, the, that, yes. Mm-hmm.
And you apply all permits already?
No, no, no. We would not, we would not be so presumptuous. Nothing will go forward until the town council approves the agreement and the contract.
Well, I, I, I feel you don't understand why, but there's publication out there, so it's already been promoted prior to approval, correct?
Well, it's all, of course, we don't have, we don't have any, we have no alternative but to promote, and we rely upon the precedents, uh, that the town has, has observed for the last decades.
So, so as you said, so many difficult times that it's professionalism, it's economics, and it's business. So business-wise, you don't start promoting without having things in order, to be sitting in order, right? So I'm just going to keep walking down this. Um, so the exclusive permit, and then second paragraph is on page 39, it says on private property. That's not on private property. We're using taxpayers', um, easements and all that, so it's not private property, correct?
When, I, I have to say to you that I'm a little bit, I'm, I'm disadvantaged, because when you reference page 39...
Well, it's, it's in the agreement. Do you have a copy of the agreement? Can someone provide her copy of the agreement if she don't have it?
Yes. In other words, this is a part of your packet, so I, I understand what you're saying.
But this, this is your agreement, so.
It is the agreement, but we don't have it paid as third.
On the agreement.
Yes, mhm. And what is the clause that you're referencing, please?
In granting this exclusive right permit, the town council and all of us at the festival grounds will be located on private property. But it came to private property, using town hall, using CRA property, that's the taxpayers' property, that's not private property, that's the people's property.
Alright, so I'm going to have to say that though I reviewed this document, I did not take it upon myself to, um, how to say, in other words, I did not take it upon myself to counter the document that was presented to our organization by the administration.
Okay, the next paragraph down, it has the twenty-seventh through the thirtieth. The festival is open on the twenty-ninth, so it shouldn't end on the twenty-ninth and not the thirtieth, correct?
Absolutely, the festival, um, the festival is the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, but the MOT, which takes, uh, which takes us to two AM on, uh, Monday morning, in other words, the, 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 um, road opens again technically at two AM on the thirtieth of , uh, January.
So the MOT says that, that two AM?
Yes, sir.
I would like to see a copy of the other question from Ms. Singh. It says established vendor has not been authorized on PEC permit, so according to ordinance twenty-ten dash eighteen, every one of your vendors then are going to have a permit, correct?
They have a permit under our, under our auspices, under the blanket permit.
So, and blanket permit, then you're gonna pay the town also for each one of those permits, correct?
The town, what, what my understanding is, is that we will pay for a special events permit as per mandated in the town's ordinance or laws, and so that, that's what we will do, and in addition, we will take care of the, the terms from the contract.
So you don't pay a permit fee per, um, vendor?
No, we've never paid a permit for each vendor. What happens again in terms of precedent is that the town gives us the ability to present an outdoor festival in Eatonville, and we are responsible for the police coverage for a two million dollar, um, liability policy that, uh, holds, uh, the town of Eatonville, um, harm, hold it harmless.
Right. And, and I understand, I understand previous, but if we're talking about, that would take town council saying that they're gonna waive, you're not paying permit fee per person, because we said MOT, they had paid a vendor fee per vendor.
I think that if you look at the.
I'm, I'm speaking with what?
That one?
I'm, I'm speaking with twenty-ten dash eighteen state, which is our ordinance.
Right, so I'm, I, I'm, I don't know about.
Okay, I'll keep moving, and I'll, I'll address that to staff then. Um, again, the free entry dates, it has to the thirtieth, but it should still, should be till the twenty ninth, in exchange for the exclusive privileges, was saying, you're saying that residents can have free entry to the outdoor festival, but then if they go into VIP area, they have to pay for that. So how are we gonna handle kids who may not have ID and all that, have y'all thought about that?
Well, kids, K-12, no matter where they live and no matter where they come from, they are free all three days.
Okay. I'll go down to the pay two. Um, pay two is twelve thousand two hundred and eighty, no later than this Friday, January twentieth, correct?
That is correct.
The cashier's check need to be payable, cause, because of previous instances, the cashier's checks need to stay, um, mad that we need to change this, payable to the town of Eatonville, because last time the check was not payable to the town of Eatonville, and it was discrepancies, and I would ask that payment be in by noon on this coming Friday. Um, down to the next section, where it said further condition governing this contract, when will we notify the businesses and residents?
Well, I, I want to acknowledge Polis Institute's, uh, cooperation with us, they will have distributed, uh, the first, we will do two flyers. Uh, one will have been distributed by Friday the twentieth, that lets people know what the entire season is. Um, the MOT that is being executed by Flashlight will give, um, the road closures dates, um, and, and in fact, you are to see, um, a, a road marker, a, not a mark, but a warning signage, uh, in addition.
Right, I have a question about that, did you pay a permit fee on that?
Say again, please.
Did you pay a permit fee on that, having that be signed up?
Uh, no, we're paying four thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars to Flashlight to execute.
Do we have to have a permit for?
MOT, um, Councilman, the MOT has to be approved by the county before it can go forward, and so what we're obligated to do is to first and foremost, make sure that the MOT is county approved, and then we have to pay Flashlight to execute that, so that, again, I, I can't tell you, I, some of the questions you're asking, I really can't.
So I'll pause for you for a second. Ms. Singh, um, those big signs like that, should it be permitted as well?
If we have signs, yes.
Okay. Um, another section, so the MOT was received by January ninth?
No, no, as a matter of fact, that was one of the, when I, that's one of the sponsors that I did make to the, um, to the administration, that we, that date should have been, um, the twentieth, the same date that we are, uh, paying the fee.
So I'm, I'm gonna still keep going, I'm, I'm, the point I'm trying to prove is, now our backs are against the wall, it's multiple changes, it's flaws in this agreement with dates not coinciding, legal counts haven't seen it, but we're supposed to prove something like, but I'll, I'll keep going. Um, next page, the tolling company, is this the current tolling company that we use right now at TRL, or is that additional tolling company?
Again, I need to, um, remind you that this document was prepared by the town's administration, and what we have done is to literally go along with it insofar as there are no, uh, there are no, uh, errors in terms of fact. Now, I did, upon receiving this document, send notice about things, there were, there were actually, I think, two areas that I made reference to, and those were what are called factual inaccuracies and things that needed, that we would like to have added. So the short answer is, no, I can't tell you about the tolling company, because, because that's not under our purview.
I, I, I hear you, Ms. NY, you keep trying to push it back on staff, I'm gonna push it back on you, because this is a partnership, you should have redlined this and sent it back, and we should have had corrections before tonight. So we're not gonna, I'm not gonna allow staff to be blamed for this, you, really, you should have created the document, and it should be on staff, so, but I, I'll keep going.
Wait, hold on, hold on one moment. Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
The tolling company information.
Yes.
Did that come from your department?
It should have, and it will have.
Okay, thank you.
That's gonna be a law enforcement.
Right.
So that is tolling company. Okay, I'm good to know that. Um, the next paragraph down, um, it say time codes no later than, the money price, the first day of outdoor festivals are Friday, January twenty twenty-three, the two million liability, shouldn't have been a Friday prior to, because the twentieth is this Friday, so instead of Monday, that should stay Friday.
We have no problem with the, the.
I'm, I'm just bringing forth discrepancies in, in contract.
I do need to respectfully disagree with you, um, Councilman, historically, the agreement, first, used to be called the resolution, was developed by the administration and PEC, but the document, the document was never our responsibility to generate the document, so we always, we always worked together, and I do, I really do need to emphasize again that what has happened in this process, this time, has really been a different level of working through a, a process, and the town's administration had us meet with the police department, um, Lieutenant Hernandez was, was the point person, right? Um, we worked back and forth in terms of what needed to be done to document the, the cost, the administration made it clear that we would have to pay the fees in advance via cashier's check. So I, I do appreciate the questions that you are raising, but I do want to, I want to, uh, say to you that the town of Eatonville, in clauses one and two, says that whereas Zora Neale Hurston is popularized, the historic town of Eatonville as, quote, "the oldest incorporated African-American municipality in the United States," and whereas the historic town of Eatonville wishes to inspire its residents, businesses, and visitors by providing a festive atmosphere, and whereas the historic town of Eatonville's government seeks to engage in branding itself and realizes that the Zora Festival is a major factor in accomplishing the overall goal of branding, I would say to you respectfully, Councilman Daniels, that that, under that rubric, that we are working cooperatively to enhance the brand that Zora Festival has actually established. And so you will find, for example, on our website, in our documents, you will see the Zora, you'll see the Eatonville Town logo as a full collaborative partner, because we see ourselves as working together. So this is not a kind of, uh, I, I would just say to you respectfully, that what we're trying to do is really promote the town of Eatonville, and I would say to you as an indicator of that for the outdoor festival, because of course, you know that there are, there is much more that we do than the outdoor festival, but in fact, that tens of thousands of people have come to the outdoor festival. So what that means is, in order for us to draw those people here, there are, there are accommodations that the town makes, because in the, in the grand scheme of things, what we're doing is to help the historic town of Eatonville brand itself as an literary destination because of the writing of Zora Neale Hurston. I mean, that, that really is the, the general explanation. Now, I don't take any offense at the questions that you're asking about timing, because yes, we have been behind, there is no doubt about that. I would also say, I would also say that the pandemic of twenty and twenty-one have had a great deal to do with not only us as a nonprofit, but a, a number. I can only, I can only assure you that given the direction of the administration, that everything has to be done, I believe the date is the first of December, Ms. Singh? The first of December of twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-three, but, but in fact, I need to say to you that we're working very hard to make sure that by the first quarter, that we are able to, um, give some progress reports, and I need to say that, that we have been working with, uh, Mayor Gardner, we had a couple of meetings outside, when I say outside, at the outdoor festival. So we've tried to do the due diligence, um, we are on a regular agenda, there are times you, you may, at, you actually may have been too young to remember this, but we've actually had special meetings, uh, three days before the festival.
But that, that, that doesn't mean it's right, like, like you, you said.
Of course, it doesn't mean it's right.
Like you said, it is professional.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean it's right.
Ms. NY, as, as you stated earlier, you started off by saying Orange County Public, I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm just bringing forth the facts, as you always say, I'm fact-checking. As you stated before, you were in Orange County Public Schools early on, Orange County Public Schools, when they told you no right then?
Mhm.
The, the ample thing in a business-like thing would been, was to come to the town and see if we can come to an amicable agreement on what the festival would look like.
No, absolutely.
And not, and, hold on, and, and I, I let you talk some.
Alright, I'll, I will.
And, and not allow things to be shoved down outdoor at last minute. You have ample opportunity, this is your thirty-fourth year. This is your thirty-fourth year. This is not your first year putting on this festival, so you knew what was expectations. And I don't think it's right to the business owners, I don't think it's right to the residents of historic town of Eatonville, that we're getting stuck at the last minute. It's economics and it's business, and those are your favorite words, and I'm, I'm just re, reusing your words, it's professionalism, it's business.
Right, and so the very.
So now we're, now we're convincing the businesses, because last year you had it in June, how did, how did the businesses in the historic town of Eatonville know that you would have it again in January?
Now, let me go back and say to you.
Can you just answer that question first?
Will you repeat the question?
How did the residents and the business owner of the historic town of Eatonville know that you was gonna have a Zora Festival in the month of January this year, unlike June that you did last year?
We did not send out a flyer announcing that, but I would say to you that the, the general buzz, the general buzz was, yes, it was going to come back in January, uh, without a doubt. Now, let me come back to say, say to you that, in fact, the most important thing, most important thing in terms of land use, when we were told in March, the very most important thing was to find out if Macedonia would be able to allow us to use it, that, that was the most important thing. Not, not about the, not, in no disrespect, not about the town of Eatonville, but about the land use, uh, that, that they would allow, and they did allow us to use all their vacant lots, for, a, as well for, for the, um, you know, for the big tents, as well as for the parking.
And, and as, as you said, um, I see your map has changed yet again from what was given to us in our packet, so now you wanna put the stage on land, who gave you permission to utilize the town property, the CRA property, possibly CRA and all that?
That was one of the questions, that was one of the permissions that we sought, one of the permissions that we sought.
Did you get through?
We were discussing in our last meeting, I did bring it up, that she would be using those properties in the last meeting. Just like we had another event out in our parking lot.
Uh, couple of things on agreement, need to set it to block, need a date, let's go to the police officers, I'm paying this for it. Um, Chief, can you answer, or Matt, can you ask Chief, um, what's the minimum amount of hours an officer has to be paid for?
Chief. Mayor Council, citizen, uh, we came up with a schedule, a floating schedule.
I, I have that, I'm just saying, so if a, if a officer comes in at nine AM and there's gonna be for him, do we just pay him for the one hour, or are they getting paid for four hours?
Four hours.
Okay. Um, if the crowd becomes larger, what happens?
Well, we have the manpower based on the numbers that were presented to us, and if the crowd comes larger, we can also call the sheriff office for assistance, because we're overmanned, you know, we're, we're outmanned. But if the crowd is less than what we mandated, we have, uh, set aside a meeting midday to say the crowd is less than what we think it should be, and we can see about letting officers go if necessary.
So, so Chief, according to your schematic, I, I did the math.
Yes, sir.
Um, on Friday, we're saying five offices, correct?
Yes.
So that, that mean we're only looking at five hundred people?
Correct.
Because the ratio is one to one hundred, correct?
Right.
Anything over five hundred, we're calling another officer.
Yes.
On Saturday, we're saying seven hundred people, because it's only seven offices.
Correct.
And then on Sunday, we're looking at seven officers, seven hundred?
Correct.
Okay. That's all that happened right now. Um, but I will say that, um, I'm not pleased with the way this was handled, this was not business, this was not professional, and again, you put our back up against the wall at the last minute, for us to, um, hopefully accommodate something that was not presented to us in early fashion. You knew in March, and now we are in the month of January, and next week is this event, and you want us to jump the boots and say, well, we've always done it, it's totally unacceptable.
Are, are there any other comments for your council?
Uh, yes, I have comments. Uh, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman, I mean, Councilman, uh, Daniels, on a lot of the questions that he asked, and this seems relatively to be very late, um, as far as I'm concerned, and this is what happens when you don't really plan, it's really a plan for failure, and this is what I see. Uh, we should have had this information some time ago, we were, uh, from one councilman to the next, we're always asking about what's going on with the Zora Festival. But now, it's like we have, it seems to me like, my feelings is that we're pushed up against the wall, and it seems to be relatively intentional, whether.
And it seems to be relatively intentional, whether it is or not, but that's the way it appears to me. Because it's like making us be committed to say, I can't seem to go against this. But I don't think there's anyone here that's not in favor of having the festival. It's just the way how it's being presented to us. There's so much disrespect. You give us something at the last minute, and you just assume that it's going to be a go. You go right ahead and advertise it without even getting any permits or anything. That's usually in the world of business, which you always refer to as business. That is not the way that we conduct business anywhere. If you're interested in doing something, you make an application, you pay your permit fees, and then you go ahead with your plans. This is just purely unacceptable. I do have a concern also about a couple of things. I know the mayor had just mentioned, that she did mention it in one of the meetings, but she did. But it doesn't give anyone the right to say that they have the right to allow someone to use something without approval. I don't, you know for yourself, that I have participated for many, many years in the Zora Festival. I have a high degree of respect for what you do and what the P E C Association do as far as the voting, the town of Eatonville as well. That's my first love, is for the town, and then for Zora. I, I'm really, 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 like I said, disappointed. I have a lot of other things I'd like to bring up too. Now, I noticed on the contract that you have, how did you come up with certain dates for deadlines? Because if you're gonna have a deadline for when you're gonna pay the money and et cetera, that should be the town's decision, to say we need our funds by es- that's the date, this date, that date. Uh, in order for us to execute what we're gonna use for our officers, but for you to select the dates that you would like to pay us, that's not the way it goes. We are the council. We tell you when we need our money to secure the town and its police officers and employees. Now, as far as the employees are concerned, I see here on, I think it's number forty, says that any town employee that works for P E C during the festival should be paid directly by P E C, no later than Friday, February the tenth. Why do they have to wait until Friday? And also, I need to find out what town employees will be utilized for the P E C festival.
Uh, let me. Wait, can we stop? Let's stop.
Can you stop?
A lot of what you are talking about is straight and straight. And, and let me finish one second. There have been many meetings administratively. What you're looking at, even if Ms. Mathieu came into this building, filled out a permit, it is not even as thorough as what you see in front of you. It doesn't even require that the sub, the sub, oh God, participants do a pay, a, a fee. One of the, one of the documents completed, and I, I wanna say that I gave you a copy of, of, of what we were thinking about, was for special permits. If you remember that conversation right after the founder's day, because there was a big, um, to do about that. I then presented a document or something for you to start looking at, and it was for special for special events. Because some of the things that you're, you're speaking of, we don't even have it in our ordinances in the town. But Mrs. Mathieu has talked to Orange County, she's talked to the chief. You can tell just by the document, she's talked with Officer Hernandez. She's gone through all of the steps. We're at January seventeenth. It is January twenty-seven, ten days from now. I think last year, no, we don't do it based on last year or the year before, but I say it is better this year. And some of the questions you're asking are so out of the legislative box that we can nitpick every single thing that comes before us. But I think all in all, this year, in regards to the paperwork getting before you for review, is better. And, and that's, and, and permits, I think we gave away the turkeys, but I'm thinking it is permit. I think there was another event, but that was on private property, but I'm thinking there was a permit. So it will, it's gonna help us by having a special permit process. Um, yes, we want it perfect, but it's not perfect. It's not perfect. You know, so I'm just asking that you stay within your legislative roles, yes, Councilwoman Daniels.
Man, I, I would tell you, section four, twenty twenty dash ten dash eighteen ordinance, section four, four point one, special events, that it does say sponsors other than the town must coordinate each special event. It does say that in ordinance, for record. Also, you say it's not legislative. Everything I went over is in ordinance twenty ten dash eighteen.
That we have a policy, not all.
The ordinance says, man.
That we have.
Let me, let me.
But you're in the administrative part of it. You, we might have an ordinance, but the administration administers.
So.
And Mrs. Mathieu has talked to everyone she needs to talk to in order for this to happen. It just seems like that, that we're seeing, yes, we need to work on things, but it seems like you're not our enemy.
I'm trying to check this. Yes.
Wow.
If an ordinance is in place, it is our legislative right to make sure that ordinance is followed, correct?
Well, i- if, if you're, if you have an ordinance in place, it's not legislative. Legislative is creating the ordinance. Quasi judicial and similar things are enforcing the ordinance. But yes, as a part of your role, one of the things you take an oath to do is to make sure you follow the ordinances of the town.
So administration should be following this ordinance, correct?
Well, I, I don't know that they're not, but yeah, everyone should.
Okay. Also, my issue why I brought this up also is, the attorney then reviewed this. Haven't we learned from previous, um, events of stuff not being done the right way? And man, if you knew all this stuff that with this N Y., you should have bought, I keep saying, transparency will eliminate a lot of this last minute stuff and a lot, a lot of last minute disagreements.
Wait, I'm, and, and I don't want this to, to be a clash.
It's not a clash.
But wasn't that I, if I knew once?
Well, Ms. N Y. stated for the record a little while ago, and we can run the tape back, that they had meetings with you, and you knew about stuff. That's what Ms. N Y. said. I didn't say it.
We walked where you wanted to. You sure did. We were walking right on Kennedy, where she wanted to set up initially. And that was several months ago. But it wasn't a document such as this. Mrs. Mathieu, I did speak for her to go over her wishes.
Right.
But there is nothing to bring before the council. These were initial plans.
So let, let me make sure I have clarity. You have authority to allow people to utilize taxpayers' space? That's, that's your responsibility, or is it council? Or who is educating me?
Let me, let me say something.
I'm not, no, no.
Let me say something about that. Let me say something about you.
I'm talking to.
I'm, I'm in a row. I'm, I'm.
Man, I'm, I'm talking to you there.
There, there. We sit here talking about city property.
Man, I'm, I'm talking to.
We're talking about city property.
Councilman, excuse me.
No, he didn't think he might.
We're talking about city property. This man painted a wall without authorization years ago. Painted a wall, city wall, without city council approval, city property. We sit up there, we just nick and pick, but you don't talk about real stuff in life. This man painted a wall without city property? A mural or whatever it is. You need to get, you need to get a senator of this council to do that.
I'm, I'm staying.
And she is minister, he was administrator. So I, I couldn't fight it. She administered. She had it. And it's city property, and she gave them the right to use whatever, and they can do that in a county.
Miss.
I'm taking it, man. This is.
Attorney Shepherd.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything that you would like to state in, in this? And, and, and I, and to me, this is pretty simple. It seems that we should work with it. If there's something that's, that's not perfect, then state what that is and what your solution is. And I know moving forward, yes, maybe we get it a month out, but.
All I can talk about is process because I haven't seen the agreement. Uh, haven't been asked to really view the agreement. But I will, what, in terms of process, given that it appears that these dates are fairly cast in stone, not, y'all could vote differently, but from what I gather, there, there seems to be a consensus that there's a dis- enchantment or unhappiness with the speed with which you're having to move or decisions that are having to be made. But I haven't heard anything that indicates that there's a desire or a willingness, more importantly, to try to push this off to another day. Given that that's the circumstance, and the answer to the mayor's question is, yeah, with the time that you have left, which is pretty limited, it starts ten days from today, it should, the time should be spent, I would think, more productively, trying to figure out, okay, what do we want the agreement to say? What do we not want it to say? And how can it be revised quickly so that you have in place an agreement that people can look to for guidance as to how they're to conduct themselves? So that would be my suggestion.
Thanks, man. Thank you.
The advantages that I have is that I've been up here a while, and I've, I've seen this process. Uh, Ms. N Y. knows that one form of process was when we found out that the people, let me just let the people know that we are all for Zora. We just want the process to be done right. When we had the opportunity to do the process and find out that permits were being purchased with, with, if I'm not mistaken, one dollar or a certain amount, and that those proceeds from the vendors, you're talking food, clothes, and whatever else P E C had to offer, went to P E C. This N Y., did we not have a meeting in this chamber and discuss a percentage of each one of those vendor fees being paid to the town? Because we realized that we were getting nothing. We were getting, our police officers were being used. And if I'm not mistaken, I think our staff would use the cleanup afterwards. And this was years. And then we found out about the, the permitting fees, that P E C paid the town, and it was, I don't know why one dollar just sticks in my head. One dollar to the town of Eatonville, but all the permitting fees went to P E C, if I'm not mistaken. And so when we discovered that ahead of time, that administration sat and said, well, let's, let's work together, P E C. Let's work for a certain percentage of your clothing, your food, and whatever else the other vendors had. And then we, we worked out. Did we, did we not do that? Or am I, what, am I?
I would say that, I would say that you are misremembering. Uh, I would say you're misremembering because in terms of the business, in other words, the vending, there, there are two things. Any proceeds that we, that comes from festival, any of those proceeds, go directly to underwrite our K twelve programs. You know, Excellence Without Excuse Community Piano Arts Lab? That, that operation is eighteen hundred and fifty, eighteen hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents a month for rent. The utilities, all right? The vending, the vending is supposed to take care of all those things connected with the Outdoor Festival. So that means the porta potties, the fencing, the M O T., the stage, the, um, the stage and the entertainment. In terms of, you put the ledger, let me just, because our board, you, you, you're right that that was a proposal, which our finance people immediately said, there's no way you can do that. There's no way. In other words, right now, all of the expense, every penny of the expense to do the Outdoor Festival comes out of the treasury of P E C dollar sponsors and adult tickets. Okay? We no longer, you, you've been here a long time, so you know, we no longer charge for parking because the vendors say if you have to pay for parking, you have to pay for children. What does that mean? There's not money to spend for vending, all right? So I, I want to, I just come back and say that, first and foremost, there is no disrespect here intended to the town council, none at all. I need to also say to you that. You'll remember, you'll remember on April nineteenth that P E C presented a workshop, a PowerPoint, where we talked about how Maitland does its special event, and how Winter Park does its special event. In other words, I need to just remind you that it's not that, you know, we come to you at the very last minute. It's that we have been continually working and working to try to bring a, a good event. And I will also say one other thing. We can tell you now what are the dates for the Outdoor Festival in twenty twenty-four, all right? If, as a legislative body, you were willing to enter, to enter into a three to five-year agreement, I think that that would be a major step forward because we organize festival in five years, five-year cycles. We can tell you right now what is the cycle name for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine. Because in order to get sponsorship and investment, we do have to plan in advance. So that, I just, I just offer that to say that no disrespect is intended. You know, we are, we're a small organization. We have two full-time paid staff members, and we have two part-time people. The way that we're able to get all of this done, really, is because of a group of volunteers across the board, local, state, and regional. It's underfunded. It is underfunded. I would also suggest to you that if we were truly working together, we might look at, and this is not gonna happen next year, but we should look at, what is it that the town of Eatonville and P E C does? The Martin Luther King Day, the Founder's Day, the Zora Festival. Why not consult with marketing experts so that we could, so that we could do a sponsorship package and Vice Mayor Daniels? A certain percentage goes to the town, a certain percentage goes to P E C. That, that, that is, that is something to work towards in terms of strategic planning. I just, I offer that to you because in other fields, in other places, Savannah, Charleston, New Orleans, Galveston, Texas, all right? There, there's a model for this. There's a model for this. We're simply trying to find it.
I don't.
Excuse me, I need my language before the mayor.
Oh, okay.
I was, when the mayor had asked to speak when I was speaking. I need to finish, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just, just for a few moments. Okay, I would just address in the, um, the style. I don't know how that's working out, or how that's gonna work. Also, what I'd like to say this is, this is N Y., as far as, the bottom line for me is this. The festival, the board, you're the executive director, been there for a long time, I know. I think it's time, the festival is in its thirty-fourth year now. Is that correct? I think it's time. It's a different time than when it was back then. Back then, the Zora Neale Hurston days, there were, you know, fifty thousand people coming, lots of people coming. The town was just flooded with people. But right now, we in a different time now, as was thirty-four years ago. I think that what needs to happen is that we need to take a step backwards. Sit down to the table with your board members and figure out what is it? Where we went wrong, and what is it that we're doing right? Because it's a different day now. It's different people now. We're the only festival that I know of this kind that actually charge patrons to come in, to charge twenty for thirty dollars to come in. And actually, we're not really getting that great quality. It, it has lost its, its oomph, I would say. So I think what we need to do, as far as your board, is you all need to evaluate exactly what is going on? Why is it wrong? Because I think what needs to happen is that you have to build trust in people, trust to your sponsors, trust to the participant, trust to the town of Eatonville. I think you'll get a lot of support if we just sit down and just not be so driven about a dollar. I know it takes dollars to run the event. I know that. But we got to find a better way. And we always want to compare what Maitland is doing, Winter Park is doing, Orlando is doing. Let's see what they're doing because those entities have value.
Because those entities have value, build trust with people that can believe in them and trust in them. They can trust you with their, with their money. Because they are the ones, the ones that's going to be giving you the money. So we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And I think when we get to that point, I think we're going to be able to make a big difference. So I think maybe the next time you come before the council, you just present your plan, like in the month of June. I think you did that one year. And I think it made things a lot more easier. It were easier to plan, make plans, and get everything taken care of. So you just need to have a model for when you're going to present, when you're going to do it. And just put a calendar of all your things you need to do and have it done. I think this will eliminate all these, these problems and these discussions that were happening here.
What I'd like to do is to assure you that some of what you have said is already in process. You're absolutely right. We can't do things the same, the same way. We have to reinvent ourselves. We have, for example, in terms of capacity, we have a CPA retired who's volunteering to help us with our capacity building. You are correct. I want to assure you that, um, we do have the trust of our, we do have the trust of our sponsors who come year after year. However, there are places. We, we recently got a new partnership with Turner Construction, new partnership, all right? You know, we've been very heavy in education, very heavy in education, very heavy in what we call the government grants. We've been successful in doing that. But you're absolutely correct in that we need to, we, we're actively engaged in trying to reinvent ourselves. Because when we started 30, 30 some odd years ago, and you are correct, we are America's, we're America's longest-running art and humanities festival celebrating the cultural contributions of people after all that. That, that is who we are. That is actually the case. Now, you're also correct, when we started, there wasn't any funk festival. There wasn't, in other words, there wasn't some of the things that, um, that we see. It was the 90s and we were able to bring what I would call list B entertainments. And they, and, and we did pull the crowd, all right? This year, it is purposely a smaller footprint. It's purposely a smaller footprint because we're trying to get ready for our 35th anniversary. And our goal is by the end of the first quarter, March of 2023, that we will be able to announce who are the, um, main presenters, period. Not just, not just outdoor, but the main presenters. You'll remember when Dr. Maya Angelo came to this event. You'll remember when Ms. Ruby Dean and Mr. Ozzy Davis, when Ms., um, oh, Sessi Tyson. But those people are gone. You know, they, they are, they, they're no longer with us. So, you know, now it's, it is our job, it's our challenge. You're absolutely correct, it is our challenge. And I would also say to you that, um, that there has been a time when the town council and the PEC board didn't meet. We, we have done that. And I think that that is a, I think it is a good idea. So some of the things that you have said, I want to assure you that we have already begun. I'm taking notes, um, to pass to our board president because I think that there is a way, there is a way forward if we're going to really. At the same time, at the same time, I want to say to you that the reputation and the draw of festival, the international draw, we know that we will have, at, at, at a minimum, I apologize, we will have 35 delegates from the World Congress of Mayors representing Senegal and the Gambia, Nigeria, uh, from South America. These will be people that are actually in the, the, um, Mayor Gardner can, can tell you. She's been participating in those, in those, uh, in those meetings. So I would say to you that what we have to do is to try to reclaim the splendor of the outdoor festival, no doubt about that. The vendors are still calling. We expect, we expect to have a, a good, solid, smaller footprint. You know, the festival is only going to be from the intersection of, of, uh, Johnson and, um, East Kennedy to the intersection of Calhoun and, um, East Kennedy. And as we work with the faith community, um, usually festivals start at 10 o'clock on, uh, Sunday. We will not start until 12 o'clock on, uh, Sunday. So, uh, there's always room for improvement. You, you're not going to get any, um, but I'm going to say to you that we're trying not to let the perfect stand in the way of the pretty good, at least. It may not be the very good, but at least not the pretty good. And as I say, we are, it's entirely possible that we will have network broadcast news coming down here. All right?
All right.
Say again, please?
Vice Mayor. Oh, Vice Mayor Daniels.
Because I do remember we did sit in here. And you're telling me that we didn't get a certain percentage of the vendors from that particular Zora. Are you telling me that? Because I'm going to go back and check.
Um, not, not only will I, I, I've taken this note because we, we could go back in our audits and our bookkeeping, our 990, um, to, because we'd have a report over there, we have to report all of that.
No, I'm, I'm, because I do remember, I, I, I don't forget much. But I do remember us coming up with a percentage of all that because we discovered, we took that proposal, but we did not. That it was a dollar blanket permit fees for all that you were about to finish, but we didn't know, I didn't know. And then we sat and we discussed in here with a presentation of a certain percentage. And I'm, I'm not crazy, I know we did that. And I, and I know we got paid for, for some of that. Because the festival was longer standing. You, you were doing your thing. And I didn't want to cut you off because all the things that you're doing, that, that's not what we're here to discuss. We're here to discuss the process of coming before us, asking for this at, at a short time when we, we discussed before paying it. As they, and since I assure you, our officers were supposed to give us pay at a certain time, and they didn't. But you assure us that they would, but they didn't. These are the things that sit with me, like with administration. Like I have questions, like if our administration is helping you with the contract, why wouldn't our legal be involved in it? Like send it over? I, I, I have that, that's, that sits with me. Like, in order for us to change the narrative, I keep saying that, we have to do things the right way. And in order for us to make sure that we're doing everything right, we send our legal just to let him vet it and check it out. My next thing is the land that I'm going to ask legal and the CAO. Does the mayor have the power to just go ahead and with you sitting at the table with administration, i.e. the mayor, give you the right to use this land that's owned by the town or the CRA right here to use it? Now, I'm going to pose those questions to our CAO and our legal to give me answers on that. And I'm going, I'm going to say it again, no one on this board is against the festival. I just feel like my own personal that the town is getting slack in the proceeds from it, let's say that. You're using everything in the town and, and we're not, we're, we're not getting anything, let's say financially from it. Let me, let me just say that. And maybe more than what we have been getting in the past. But I'm going to just let that there. I, I have troubles with the contract not being shipped to legal. And who helped? You write it. And does the man have the power to allow you to use land without coming back to the board or maybe even CRA board to ask, can PEC use this expertise?
Let me weigh in on something. Thank you for coming, Mr. Zora, NY. We still talk about funds, money come to the town Eatonville. I realize that if we let a developer come in here, then we don't get no money. Blanket permit exempt from paying any taxes, fees. That's the unclaimed project down the road that they supported. They let it come through, it's awful, half a million dollars. Almost from a quarter to half a million dollars, they come in here, don't pay no fees. But we sit here giving you a hard time about some fees, about some money. We haven't got nothing from the people down the road. Not one cent. They, they're exempt for paying any taxes to the town Eatonville. I just found this out last week. Exempt linkage fee, all that. I'm, I'm wrong? Yeah, no, I'm not wrong. Anything. They had the documents, they're posterated, like they were in yours. They don't, they don't give us any money. And we sit here giving you a hard time about a permit. And I know we waived permits for you years ago, I mean, in years. We waived permits in the past. I know those things because it's town Eatonville. People come in here for town, Tom, 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 the show came here, all that stuff. I remember those days. But we forget that we let a developer come in here exempt for paying any doggone fees that's building today like ants. This is what we forget, I'm boring. I am boring. When I found that out last other week, I'm like, what? No linkage fee, no, no water fee, tie-ins, anything. We have, the taxpayers have to pay for that. Since we send my taxpayer dollars, I have to pay for that. So where that, where's this argument at? I want to know where this argument with these guys is. Where this argument at? I don't care, but this, this nothing compared to half a million, half a million dollars that'll let a developer come in here and the impact on this community. There's not an impact, there's not a big impact. That's impact down there. Hundred something, ninety seven apartments, that's an impact to me. This is nothing to me. Where we going with that? I'm done.
Councilwoman.
I'm going to stick with fact, we're talking about Zora.
Well, that's, it's money, it's about money.
I'm, I'm.
You, you used to have driven her like she ain't.
Thank you, thank you. I believe in collaboration, Ms. NY. If we can, we can roll the record back from last time. I gave concessions last time to you. You promised me last time that we would talk and we would get through this. Same thing you're saying right now, you said to me before. First time, shame on me. Second time, shame on you. And to address what what Councilman Washington said, that all of the fees and we don't have that. I think Councilman Washington don't know the ordinance when it talks about code enforcement has to be, and other duties that have to be done. That's why you collect the permits. You collect the permit fees to bear the offset, the cost of staff having to work those times. And it's not a taxpayer to the residents of the store time being there. I'll also address my whole importance of talking about all this as well. There's residents who have homes in an area of operation that you're talking about for the Zora Festival. Have we went down and had a conversation with them? Some of them park on Front Street. How are they going to get to their houses and all those different things? And my last thing to give Councilman Washington a peace of mind, he's saying that, um, about giving things to you. If I recall, agencies of this town have given you over $75,000 in the last three years, correct?
No, I would say $50,000 to the CRA through its mission. And I do want to say.
And that $50,000 was for what?
As support of the programming that we were doing.
For what?
For K-12 students, for the portlets, for the out, we can certainly provide you with that information.
It was for, it was for Zora and all those things, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I, I just wanted to make sure that Councilman Washington had a clear understanding of getting documentation to know that money has been given to you by taxpayers to help out with this cause. So that was my point of saying that. Thank you.
I do want to say to you that, um, so that I can, so that I can keep my credibility. I did speak to the mayor about a point person from the council. She indicated to me that she wanted to be that person. And so I just need to, so that you know, I, I'm not just going to, you know, I just can't be shame on me and shame on you. The other thing is this, please remember that on April 19, I asked for a workshop to talk with, and, and a PowerPoint, a PowerPoint workshop to talk about how we might move forward. So I, I just want to make sure that, again, you do not have in your minds a recollection that, you know, in March, we do this and so, and then all of a sudden, we let December and January come and, you know, you know, bad, bad intention, disrespect. And now we show up and we want you to approve this agreement. I also want to say that, um, we asked in the agreement that the town of Eatonville give us permission to use the land across the street from the museum, the CRA. And we asked that it be included in the agreement that on Saturday and Sunday, we could bring public service vehicles, the sheriff, the fire, blood bank into the town of Eatonville's lot, our town hall. We did not presume, we did not presume, nor did the mayor give us permission, nor did we ask the mayor for permission to use a CRA property just like that. We asked that, that the CRA lot be able to be used and that we use a green room because on Saturday, officials, local, state, and international will be coming to the festival. And we wanted to have them be able to sit in the conference room so that they would have a place to sit. Those are the, those are the kinds of questions that we asked for permission to do. Just for the record, again, the mayor did not give permission, nor did we ask it of her. We asked that be included in the agreement.
I, I didn't see that in the agreement. So I, I think, I mean, we, we talked about this for a while. Um, Matt, if I can entertain, I think, um, Mr. Shepherd needed to, um, review this and it needs to be read by. So I'm going to ask that we probably need to table this and we're going to have to come back together. Because there's no way we can go through this agreement tonight. And it's so much stuff that's out of order in it that we probably need to come back together. Or I'll take Mr. Shepherd's advice, or he may please be done, and CAO.
Attorney Shepherd. Wait, I'm sorry, let's start with, um, Mr. Shepherd, you have something else to.
I just want to respond to Vice Chair Daniels' comment about authorization. The use of town's property or the CRA's property that's included in the agreement is a recommendation. So essentially what it's saying is that I don't have the authority to make that decision. And that's why it's in the agreement before the council. Ultimately, you have that authority. I just wanted to answer your question.
In terms of reviewing, is there someone? I want to make sure. In terms of reviewing the agreement, yes, I'll be happy to do it. Do I think it's wise? Sure. Um, but again, it's not my call. I don't get to say, send me everything. The town has to affirmatively send me what it wants me to review before I will weigh in. And I will certainly try to turn around as quickly as possible. Uh, my concern simply is timetable because I don't know whether you wanted to have a special meeting to get this approved or whether this would just go back to the CAO or the mayor or what the plan is. So I could do my turnaround as soon as I get the document and look at it and, and see what needs to be done. But after I get done with it, where it goes from there and on what schedule? I don't have any control.
Mayor.
Yes.
Provide Mr. Shepherd with the, with the agreement that's before the council for this review. I'm not sure about turnaround time. We do have a meeting on Thursday, if possible. If we could discuss it on Thursday, I am not sure if we can get everything done. And this has been the issue, uh, not getting things on time. In fact, this was scheduled for the January 3rd council meeting. Did not have the information, so it was postponed to this meeting. And as you can see, there are things just because of the rush that's missing. In addition to that, this is not the original urgent that was committed before the council. So timing is an issue and it's a challenge for staff. When the information isn't presented, it's a bit of a time for a faulty original. When the information isn't presented, it's a bit of time for a faulty review. And that's the reason this wasn't presented to Attorney Shepherd.
So, Mr. Smith, you're saying on Thursday, so we have a CRA meeting, so we would do it before or after the CRA meeting? Have a special meeting? Mrs. Shepherd, I don't know if this requires, this particular item would require a postponement. Probably like we did if the best man were-
It, it's a legislative decision and so, all it requires is whatever reasonable notice is unless there's something contrary in your internal procedures, again, which I, I'm not aware of any, um, your charter, whatever, regarding what typical meeting does. Perhaps Ms. King knows right off the top of her head. But at the end of the day, it is a council issue, it is not a CRA issue. So, it would have to be noted as a council meeting.
Um, I have one question. So if we do not have an MOT at all, if, if there is no MOT, if they vote tonight, no. Then what?
Well, if, if it's because of, of wanting the agreement reviewed, you can call a special meet. Um, you know, we talked about having Thursday already set, okay? But maybe Friday work, again, I, I don't know, I'm not trying to put something on somebody's schedule. All I'm saying is, if, if it's a time-critical thing, which is why I referred to the dates, you could see from my watch that we're ten days away, counting today, then you have to do what you have to do or you have to recognize that it's not gonna get done in time and manner. And alternatives have to be considered, including dates and reschedule. Um, but if that's not the desire, which is why I said, it didn't appear to me that that was desire, then you have to really take some extraordinary actions if Thursday doesn't work to get it heard and approved soon enough so that the folks who are doing the organizing, organizing can make sure that the vendors are comfortable, that they'll show up to a festival that is run properly with all the things that are supposed to be done. The portlets are in place, all of the stuff that needs to be done, be done. Um, so that's, that's really what it boils down to is how quickly we can turn it around. I haven't even seen it, so I don't know what we're talking about, but when I'm here thirty pages, I get a little nervous. But, but I'm, we'll turn it around as quick as we can. But again, the ordinary process is, let's suppose it comes back a sea of red. And I just see nothing in there that I like. So now it's gotta go back to somebody on the other side to review, or they just say, okay, we'll accept it and go with it. I, I don't know, and that's, I, I can't predict that. So if you were to have, if I can get it turned around in time for a Thursday meeting, there's no guarantee that, uh, Mr. Smith's group will be able to say, yeah, we're good with all of it. In time just for y'all to say, okay, then we have a deal. I, I just, I don't have a way to know that.
Do we know when the MOT is supposed to come back?
The MOT is supposed to be paid for tomorrow. It's already been approved by the county, Ms. Smith. Yeah, we, we're on that. Not only are we paying you twelve thousand two hundred and eighty dollars on Friday, we're, we're supposed to disperse money for the, to Flashlight tomorrow.
And, and, and hear me, and I hear you, Attorney Shepherd. If we, if I wouldn't say nothing, all these things tonight, and this agreement went through and we voted yes, this agreement would have been null and void from the day start. Because on it, it says the ninth of January is when MOT.
And of course, I should say to you, but for, for the record, that those, those dates, in other words, you asked it, I reviewed. Yes, I did review the document and I can forward to you, when I take my seat, what was sent to, um, Ms. Janetta Robinson and then to the CAO. So those things that you see, those were caught. Those were caught and they were, and they were corrected. And I should say, uh, by, in defense of the process, that Lieutenant Hernandez and, um, the county engineer and the PEC team met beginning, uh, in December. And to her credit, Lieutenant Hernandez responded thoroughly to, um, the questions that our organization raised. She answered them thoroughly and, um, we were satisfied. Um, she had to have a little time, in, in other words, yes. We've, we've all been against, against the time. And I do take your, all of your comments seriously and with respect, um, Councilman Daniels.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I saw- There is a motion on the floor during the discussion part of the session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, I'm sorry. There was also another, another, um,
Table.
suggestion to table it. But I guess, I guess my rudimentary question is, if there is a no vote, whether it's tonight, whether it's Thursday night, so we're not playing, I'm not gonna say playing games, but we knew this was coming. So if this turns out to be three nos, two yeses, or whatever, then I'm asking a question, Attorney Shepherd, then, then what?
Okay. In, in other words, if it's voted down, what, what then? Well, what next? It, it is hard to know because what I've just heard is, there's a deadline tomorrow to make a payment of some amount to somebody for something. I, I don't even know what the payment's for. Yeah, I don't know how hard that deadline is. I don't know if it can be extended. I don't know what kind of commitments that if this thing were to go down tonight or get postponed from another night, what might fall through. And that's an impossibility for me to predict. So, like, would vendors pull out, would say, okay, well, we're, we're just not gonna come because we got a plan to, to be there, we gotta arrange to travel? I, I, I just don't, there's too much I don't know. So what I would suggest is, if it is a close enough call where what we really are concerned about is this thing or that thing, if we can vet that now so that the parties can come to an agreement right here and right now to what needs to be changed, like the date of January ninth, whatever it is you refer to, again, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have anything to refer to, so I don't know. But whatever it is, if there are like, you know, some critical points that from your perspective must be changed, if you could negotiate them tonight, make the changes in the documents tonight and approved, then there would be a document that was signable. In the absence of that, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm pretty good at what I do, but I'm not a magician.
All right, so can we go right there? Um, I was talking to Councilman Daniels. Is there anything specifically that needs to be changed in this agreement for you to provide the agreement and approval tonight? I mean, I know that you listed many things, but in regard to this agreement, what specifically?
Ma'am, may I, um, ask something? If you review the agreement, I would recommend that you, uh, review the one that has been read line. It was provided in the CRA packet as an update when it was delivered. It is also available on the website if you wanna be able to pull it up. There were updates that were made after the initial council packet went out.
Can you quickly just tell us, I, um, if, you have me being a time, thank you, Ms. King, but I mean, you put nine, ten.
If I could, if I could pass this to, uh, Councilman Daniels.
It would take all of us, I mean, I'll look at it.
This is, this is specific to the, I'll read, I'll read it for the record if you'd like.
Please, just the, from a, the main updates.
This was sent on January twelfth at eight fifty-four, eight, uh, AM. Good morning, Ms. Janetta. Thank you for your patience in receiving this email. Yesterday, one slash eleven, I only had the ability to acknowledge receipt of your email regarding, quote, attached is the agreement and attachment that are going before the council. In this email, I wish to, one, include additional verbiage, which PEC also wishes to have in the agreement. Two, draw to your attention content which factually inaccurate so that it can be corrected. And three, for your information, attach a copy of the twenty twenty-three Zora Festival season agenda glance which is distributed to every household in Eatonville by one twenty-one. Additional verbiage, which PEC also wishes to have in the agreement. A, to use a vacant lot across the street from Eatonville Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA, owned by ECRA question, as a part of the Zora Outdoor Festival of the Arts inventory. B, to endorse PEC's coordination with the Eatonville Community Redevelopment Agency for the use of its external and internal space as PEC facilitates operations. For example, when the VIP guests and/or elected officials arrive on Saturday, PEC can use the ECRA conference room as a green room. C, to allow PEC to use the town hall parking lot on Saturday and Sunday for public service community space booths, such as a blood bank, Orange County Fire and Rescue.
That's what's in our agreement that we have in front of us.
Two, content which is factually inaccurate so that it can be corrected. A, the Zora Outdoor Festival of the Arts dates are Friday, January twenty-seven through Sunday, twenty-nine. Therefore, I ask that you go back through the agreement and make the changes necessary. B, Eatonville adults and children who want to sit in the reserved slash VIP section of the main stage on Saturday, January twenty-eighth and Sunday, January twenty-ninth will have to pay the required ticket price.
Ms. Smith, the theory, what you're saying, we have-
I'm just, I just-
in blue, are we, are we working with this, this one included? It wasn't out of- You don't have this one?
No.
This was added to the, yes.
Can I just finish the C, C and Z?
Go ahead.
C, there is, quote, a disconnect in the clause which reads, to pay to the town of Eatonville, see attached from A. Because PEC is to deliver a cashier's check no later than January twenty, the phrase that is a disconnect is upon the confirmation of time sheets and other bookkeeping requirements. Further, in regard to payment, there needs to be wording that reflects the fact that the town of Eatonville will refund to PEC any funds due it should the Eatonville Police Department show fit clause to reduce the number of offices and assign based on attendance. D, regarding the verbiage on Flashlight, the date should read no later than January twenty, twenty twenty-three. And E, a question for the record, because of the required MOT which Flashlight is executing, are the two clauses regarding no parking or tollways zones, are they relevant to the agreement? And so those are the things, those are the items that I brought before, uh, the attention of the CAO. He did send back saying that there would be accommodation if necessary about the, uh, reduction in, um, offices. And so from our perspective, from our perspective, the agreement and the attachments, we were, we were satisfied with them as an organization.
Thank you. So at this point, we're still in the middle of a, of a motion versus table it. So, I, I, the only thing I know to do,
Mr. Call, question.
So I'm gonna go ahead and call for the, for the vote. I'm gonna try more questions on what Ms. Smith theory just added. This was given to us in our, as a follow-up to the original package.
Do you have any other questions about it? I mean, do you wanna add or delete?
Are there any other, any other questions or updates? The only thing that, um, I would say is just make sure all the grounds are returned to original conditions, you know, so make- I know that it's stated in here, if, if any of the towns, persons are needed, um, to, to, for any reason, then the town should be compensated for that time. So I don't know.
For the record, Madam Mayor, we have, we've never used the Public Works for the town of Eatonville because we have our own crew.
Right, you wish we had Mr. Shepherd.
And for the record, we've never had any, uh, problems with, um, you know, with, uh, how do you say? Uh, problems with the return of the, of the grounds.
Okay.
Um, Public Works Director Albert English has helped us, uh, in terms of, um, facilitating, what is it, company wasteful, waste connection.
Okay.
So that, but typically, you know, it's a self-run operation.
All right, thank you. All right, so the motion's on the floor, all in favor of the approval of the agreement between town of Eatonville and the association to preserve the Eatonville community, say aye, or aye, all opposed?
Nay.
No. So the only, the only, um-
May I make a motion, gonna take this motion and come back on Thursday if feasible to review a finalized document with all the changes to it.
Okay, so then my question then would be, based on the, the document that we have in front of us that was given to everyone, are you saying you want another document that we have not given the changes to be made to it? That's what, that's what I was asking, what specifically did you want changed? And then Ms. Smith, the theory read, the emails with those changes, which is the document that was given to us, then who? Right.
Ma'am, I ask you a simple question. Do you have MOT?
No, no, I don't have, have MOT.
How do you approve a agreement without the MOT?
Because that's part of the whole process. Um, Ms. Smith theory will not be able to shut down that street without the MOT. Mine, looking at a document from Orange County, I think, yes, so if you want MOT, you have MOT, um, a, uh-
What I have, what I have-
Chief Jenkins, you have a copy of the MOT, you get it. Do you receive them?
Yeah, Flashlight has gone forward based on the county engineer's approval. In other words, we couldn't even come to that. Now what I do have is a copy of the, um-
So if, if Chief Jenkins, ma'am, have not seen MOT?
Chief Jenkins, do you, let me, let me finish my question, chief. Chief Jenkins, do you usually receive a copy of the MOT? What do you receive to know that someone can shut down whole street?
When the county approves it, then I send you a copy.
Right. And the other thing is, all the, all the steps that Ms. Smith theory is going through is in our codes. It is listed in our codes, our Unicode, which is kind of how I'm familiar with all the steps. So for anyone who has a special event here that's required this level of, this level of activity, there are, there are certain steps. So the MOT, I mean, not MOT, this agreement is simply saying you went through all of those steps. So, I, I, I don't, I still don't know what new agreement you're gonna receive except for this agreement because we have not given, Ms. Smith theory, anything to update this agreement with unless we're gonna wait for the, the comments that Attorney Shepherd may give to the document.
So you're saying that we're waiting on the fees too? Ma'am, are we waiting on the, um, permit fees for the twenty-ten, actually ten?
And I'm gonna ask a question. Ms. Smith, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, in June, did we require the, um, vendors to, and, and the reason, here's why I'm asking. We had a church put on the event. Our, our step is that the person giving the event pays the fee.
That's what you-
That, because we've had this conversation before and that, because of that event. But there's nothing that, that, that's, and I will review the resolution that you have, Councilman Daniels.
It's ordinance.
I mean, ordinance that you have. How did it go in, in, in-
My understanding is that we pay a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a special event permit. That is what the town's regulations require. That is what the town's regulations require. A hundred and seventy-five dollars for a special event now.
And also, and I'm telling you what the ordinance says, and also the vendor is supposed to pay a fee of no less than thirty-five dollars because code enforcement has to go out there and make sure things are within code, as well as the health department. So who's gonna cover those costs?
Typically what happens, um, is that you all have a contract with, uh, who is, what is the name of the company that you have, that comes out and does? They actually do that and repay them. I've forgotten what the name of that, there's a, there's a company that, uh, looks at the, um, looks at the, um, at the vending.
And just make sure you have files, make sure you-
That's exactly right, that's, that's exactly right. And of course, the health department covers the other part. What is it, what do they call them?
Thank you.
Universal, yeah. So we, we pay the eight hundred, well, usually it's about, you know, it's between, it's about, between six hundred and fifty, eight hundred dollars. We, we cover that cost.
So at this point, the only thing that I'm thinking that we're going to come back together for is to reschedule, to take another look at this, based on Attorney Shepherd's review of the document.
And then can we stand, Attorney Shepherd, um, twenty-ten, that's eighteen, going along with that? So he have a guidance, so be able to see what special ones to cover?
Mrs. The Theory, would you make certain that the lawyers just accompany? And that's only, because at this point, in regards to what the council has given, I haven't heard anything that they wish to be added or detracted from this agreement.
But we've been.
All right, with that, with that, so what do you want to bring up on Thursday? We have a CRA meeting, I think, at six thirty?
You want to schedule a five-thirty?
Attorney Shepherd, are you available?
On Thursday? Uh, I don't think so, but let me look, I, I, maybe somebody will be from my office, but hang on one second. Thursday, uh, yeah, I have a meeting somewhere at Rosen Siegel Creek for something at five o'clock. But perhaps someone else, Patrick or Jacob can be available. I know that Jacob has at least one fan up here. Um, I'm just not sure, but I will check with him, and, and so I will find out.
Um, will they have an opportunity to review the document?
Well, they won't, but I will. It's just a question of who's going to sit in the chair.
Yes, all right. So will be covered, um, so if the meeting is at six thirty, would we be okay calling a six o'clock meeting?
You'd say thirty minutes, we'll get some time, ma'am?
I mean, it really should be. It really should be. Unless Attorney Shepherd has some serious concerns.
And we'll know that by tomorrow.
I'll do the best I can, I mean, I do have other stuff going on.
Give me a hard time, ma'am.
I don't need to sleep, no problem.
I mean, so is there any red flags, I mean, barring, barring any red flags then?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Do I have a question, please, so that I have a sense of the, the sense of whether, because we, we do have obligations. Um, barring, barring red flags, barring illegality, barring a, um, um, recommendation by the town's attorney that this agreement should be null and void? I just didn't have a sense of, is the council going to rely upon the attorney's recommendation to ratify or deny this, uh, this, a contact agreement? I would like to have a sense of that, because I, I need to get in contact with my superiors to let them know really, you know, where, where we are. So just a sense of that, are you going to rely upon your attorney's recommendation, up or down, or not?
Yeah, well, let me, that's true, but it's, it's not, I want to make sure that there's real clarity here, because attorneys who recommend that councils do or don't do specific things other than follow the law, don't last very long. So my recommendation would simply be whether or not the agreement, uh, is as protective of the town as it could be, given the time constraints and all the other stuff. But, for example, you'll never hear me say, "Yes, you should definitely have a festival," or, "No, you shouldn't have a festival," or, "This is the band you should invite," or any of that stuff. It's, I'm, I'm about the law, the rest of it is y'all.
So it's about that and MOT being done, because a part of the agreement is that MOT will be approved.
Yeah, MOT has been approved, council.
But it, it had to be in our possession, because the book is coming into, and I'm just going off of my memory of reading, that it should be turned into the clerk or the designated in the town. So it can't be in your hands, it should be in our hands to know that everything is being done accordingly.
All right, then tomorrow morning I'll be getting in contact, or, or is it appropriate that you get in contact, the CAO Singh with Eddie Quinn?
But that places it back in administration, and that's my whole point.
I just think, no.
You need to provide, I'm sorry, ma'am, but you need to provide that us. I don't think we should be using our tax credit dollars to do that. You need to provide that, that should do that, this is your event.
As, as the young people say, norms.
I think that's what I'm thinking. All right.
So consensus that it's Thursday, five-thirty, do you need vote on it or anything?
Uh, Thursday at five-thirty or Thursday at six?
Five-thirty, ma'am?
Five-thirty, councilman, councilwoman, five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Then that's good. Five-thirty Thursday, we'll have a special session with this item. Mrs. The Theory.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to bring to the council's attention the document received from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And it states, State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection versus the town of Eatonville, the central. And this order, and essentially what an order is, is a settlement of the department's civil and administrative authority under Florida law to resolve certain matters, and in this case, certain violations of the town. With respect to the violations, we had several violations going back to two thousand twenty-one, almost a year ago. And I found out this evening from our utilities operator that this issue dates back to two thousand and nineteen. And the issue is that our water is not in compliance with the EPA standards. And again, I don't mean to scare anyone, but there are certain chemical compounds in our water. And one of those chemical is, if I could pronounce it correctly, is trihalomethanes. And essentially, exposure to this particular chemical includes cancer, organ damage, blood and nervous system disorders. This is a serious concern. Again, we had violations going back to two thousand and eighteen, and nothing was done. Uh, tonight, I have Mr. Carlos Toll, our contracted consultant, to share with you all his expertise regarding this matter. And if you have questions, you'll be able to answer those. I tried to discuss this in a discreet way. Unfortunately, there isn't such option, other than individual briefings with each of you. And I think it's important that we have this conversation as quickly as possible, because if we don't resolve this matter besides the health issues, there are severe penalties in terms of fines for this thing. So with that, if you would allow me, Mr. Toll, if you could share some background about this, when you found out about it, and what we have done, how long it's going to take to fix it, and what's the, the possibility going forward to make sure that this is resolved in a way that we can have quality water for residents?
Okay, my name is Carlos, I'm with dimetric utilities. I've been operating your facility for years. Um, this question is asked, this has been, I would say about two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, has been brought up to the last administration, I'm assuming at this point, um, the proposals, the information, the only thing is, is that we don't make the decisions. The administration here has made the decisions, whether to do something about it or lay, uh, funds or whatever needs to be done in order to do it. We have made every effort to contact this administration in order at that time. Now, since then, to just jump forward a little bit, to give a bit of a little relief, is that since, uh, Mr. English has been here, we've been working together. We already, um, put in flushing systems out there to flush the systems that you guys approved just recently on the eighth month of last year. Um, and we're flushing, getting ready for testing. The time period is approximately about a year. You, we have to do four quarters. That's just for the state regulations, that doesn't require what we do for you, or what you want done. Um, numerous of things have been, uh, asked for, and, um, it was about chlorination system to be replaced or upgraded, to also put a pilot system back in, uh, let me fill my eyes. Back, uh, in, to propose a chloramine system back in eleven, twelve, twenty nineteen. Um, no word was ever done, no, yes, no, meetings, nothing. Also proposed of six, uh, flush valves originally was done back in twenty twenty, or twenty nineteen, I believe. Um, you guys started failing as of twenty nineteen. Chlorine and ammonia proposal was turned in, uh, about the same time, twenty twenty. Uh, pilot study, again, eleven, twelve, twenty nineteen. A pilot study is the study of controlling most, um, cities. I would say ninety-nine percent of the cities on the eastern and western seaboard in South Florida has a problem. And the water, it's not just the city, everybody has that problem, okay? It's, uh, and at a different rate. The water has organics. When the organics are mixed with chlorine, it creates these two byproducts that you mentioned, which is short, it's THMs and H double A fives, okay? Um, some are worse than others, some, can it be taken care of? Absolutely. Um, I've seen worse, a lot worse than we all have, because your water quality is not that bad, considering, because the more chlorine demand you have, the more the growth of these two contaminants, okay? So, right now, what we're doing is the flushing, we are, we already proceeded with a test. We did it on Friday, it was ready, um, because it's not just putting flushing systems, it's making adjustments to the facility in order to bring the chlorine down, and that was the idea. Now, the next thing what we're going to do is to do another test in about two weeks for the state. We're going to utilize that and make a decision whether we're just going to go into a chloramine system automatically, not do a pilot study, but just jump into a chloramine. The reason I say that is because, um, literally, there's nothing else out there, okay? That is feasible, effective, um, and like I said, most of, uh, major cities are using it, because there's nothing else. Any questions so far, before I go further?
So, I, I agree.
Yes.
So you're saying, once the test is, we'll jump into a chlorinated system?
Say again, sir?
You say we'll jump into a chlorinated system?
A chloramine system. Chloramine system is chlorine and ammonia together. And what that does, um, it, it stops the growth of, immediately, of any byproducts.
So question?
Yes.
What would have hurt starting right now, without that even taking place?
Because you may not need it right now. If you all want to make that decision tonight and say, you know, let's get it started, that's not a problem.
I mean, if, if you're telling me that we've been building a system since twenty nineteen?
Yes.
Is what I think I wrote down?
Yes, sir.
And we haven't passed since twenty nineteen?
No, sir, it's been up and down. Uh, what, uh, what you're failing now is, right now, what they're citing you for is. Let's see.
I mean, if I had, if it's my choice, I'm going to say to go ahead and start now. I mean, if you haven't given me a passing system since twenty nineteen, why should I wait to continue to do it instead of starting the treatment process right now?
Well, we did have.
If we start the treatment, I'm sorry to touch on, if we start the treatment right now, we can always stop it, right? They could possibly go ahead and start working.
Absolutely, there's, there's, we can start it right now, because what it is, is that basically it goes to an engineer. I work with an engineer, how to design it, how to put it together, if he may not know how to do one, or he hasn't done one, especially your engineers. Um, we could put one together, turn it into the state. I would say it would, on a short, it would be about three to four months, it would be installed.
It'd take three, four months to get started?
Yeah, not only installed, but engineered and passed by the state, that is approved.
I have a question.
Yes.
At this moment, is, is our water safe to drink?
When you say safe, let, let me put it this way, the passing, right now, let, let me go back a little bit, okay? That may answer your question. Um, we're in stage two, okay? Stage one is stage two or stage three, when it goes to three, they may lower the MCLs. Right now, the MCLs that you're not supposed to go over, if you're familiar with milligrams per liter, is eighty and sixty, okay? Eighty for the tralometanes and sixty for the T, for the H double A fives, okay? We're getting like eighty-nine, eighty-two, while some, you know, and this is just on one site. We test two sites. One site, you're failing, okay? And this because, because the water's not being drawn, or it's not being used. So that's where the flushing comes in. And it's not really flushing, they call it flushing, but we're just moving water, that's all we're doing. Moving water so water doesn't stay still. The longer it stays still to the user, the longer it, you know, times to grow. And that's something that's going around, and it's been like that forty years ago. This started in South Florida, because it's the biggest organic standard. It's so bad, the organics that there's color in the water. The more color in the water, there's usually evidence that it's, you know, more against.
Uh, to answer your question, according to the DEP, this is unsafe.
Okay, thank you. That's what I need to know.
Again?
Well, we've done testing, we're waiting for test results to come back. There's a possibility that those test results will come back with a passing rate. There's also a possibility you may not. But based on what we know today, this is not up to standards. The EPA is the department that is responsible for setting standards that are considered safe and standards that are considered unhealthy.
Well, at this point, shall we have a more water alert for drinking?
He's not going to solve it.
We were supposed to issue notice from the time we realized that we failed quality, but apparently no one could answer the question and notice it's gone out.
Wait, may I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
Because I want to break it down this simple. Sir?
Yes.
Would you drink water from our faucets here?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's the important thing for the citizens who may be listening to this meeting to know.
Absolutely.
And, and I think the, the way to explain it, because I have had issues with water and other jurisdictions, is that they put in these standards, they're not arbitrary, they're definitely scientific, but they also built in with a certain margin for error. But what absolutely is the case is that Mr. Daniel's initial reaction, which is, "Why aren't we doing it now?" That's the right one. So for the citizens who just want to know, "Can I drink the water or not, or can I take a shower or not?" Based on the expert that we have in front of us, that seems to be okay. That doesn't mean the system's okay, but it is a critical factor to know that, if you're a citizen. And then after that, how fast can you work to get it where it's within those standards? And then after that, how fast can you work to get it where it's within those standards, which are on the right side of the margin of error?
And I have a quick question. I know that you said moving the water. Would that not be, is there a reason that moving the water, that that won't be a solution forever? Like, will that work forever?
No, ma'am.
So what, what needs to happen after?
In my experience, I think it gets worse. Organics, water changes, it doesn't usually get better, so...
Even with moving the water?
Even moving the water. So where chloramines, when the introduction of chloramines, then all you're doing is adding ammonia to your chlorine, okay? That's basically it. And by doing that, you usually cut about thirty-three percent of your present readings that you're getting now, okay? Yes, sir.
So, if we, if we add it tomorrow, if we add it tomorrow, how soon could we see a difference in those changes?
If we add it tomorrow?
Yeah.
It would be, based on your flow, I would say probably three to six days.
I'm not a, I'm not a rocket scientist, but I mean, to me, that's a, that's a no brainer. I mean, and that's, I'm overthinking it.
And that, will that work for, I mean, not for everybody, will that work?
Would that work?
I, I guess my drawback is adding more chemicals with chemicals.
Yes, ma'am.
How long will that work? Is there something eventually that needs to happen?
No, ma'am. No, there's, there's nothing out there that is, that is more economical and fast working. Now, there are bads, that, and I wanna explain this, it is very important, okay? The good side, you won't taste any chlorine ever again in your water, okay? Like the taste that you get when you're drinking chlorinated water. It's very effective. It does work. Like I said, most cities have it, and that's why they're in compliance. Small facilities are doing that now. Because as the water gets worse, if they fail, if they fail, then right away, they gotta do something. The problem here is that the city didn't act quickly enough at the beginning to do a pilot, to have the time to do what we're doing now. So, you're right, we need to speed it up, but that's your decision down there. You know, I just lay out the facts.
The problem is, I just wanna know what would help.
So, I mean, like, we've been drinking, I'm sorry, all of you, I'm sorry. And, and, and that is the reason that you need to be notified, correct? So I guess my question right now is, based on what's in front of us, if we, the question now is, do you add the ammonia?
Do we have it?
No, with, the question now, do we add it?
Well, at the point, at the point is, I go along with the gentleman that said, why not do it now? Because you don't have any other...
Right, and that's my, that's what I'm saying right now for the council, is that is the question. Do we go ahead and add the chlorine, chlorine now? So is there something you just call it a floor?
You can't.
Nope.
Excuse me.
Yes.
You can't just add it just because you, you know, order needs, it has to be engineered, has to be approved, has to be approved.
Three, four months before that, right? So you're looking at eight to nine days.
So you have a process, but in order for you to go through that process, would you not need us to approve it? Is there a document that, that we must sign? I'm asking, I guess, the attorney to give me the proper process.
I, I, I don't know about this gentleman's company, but typically, the first step is to approve him to go forward. And right now, I don't know that the city has an estimate or a cost estimate. However, this is one of those rare death instances. While you want to know what it's gonna cost, I don't know that you have a whole lot of other alternatives. The key, the reason I asked the question that I did is because we've got citizens here and people who listen online who might say, well, wait, can I, do I have to stop drinking the water? What about cooking? What about showering? So we've had an answer to that question. But still, if I sit where they sit, I don't want this lingering any longer. It's been since two thousand eighteen. So authorizing him to begin the process, that's seems to me what's in front of us. If he can provide you with some estimate of cost, that would be awesome, but I don't know whether he can do that.
I, I agree with that. And then also, I say it transposes everything. You have to get ahead of it, so we need to notify the public and we need to let them know what is going on. Because what you don't want is people that don't know what's transpired to be able to give in the surgery to it, and they don't, they don't know. So...
Exactly. About the three years of what are the health risks that I've been under, somebody help me, please. Or y'all can ask the question if that makes everybody feel better.
And right now, I'm trying to get to the solution, yes.
I understand the solution, we got the solution, but seeing he said, this has been in effect since two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we are failed. So that means we got citizens here and the town residents who've been consuming this water over the last three years.
So, 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 Mr. Toll, is there something that you can provide to us that we can get out to the residents of this town of Eatonville? Or what we say, and what's the next steps, and maybe the health risk that's been out there?
What is recommended by DEP is a letter, once it fails, and the people are notified that, you know, this has occurred. It's a form letter that is written by DEP, not by me or yourself.
Okay.
And it's sent out to the people to inform them of the process.
And how long is that turnaround time? So we notify DEP tomorrow?
Well, that would be, that would be...
I know we gotta do it, but if we notify them, what's usually their turnaround? I'm trying to come up with a timeline of work along.
I wouldn't know that. I'd know your staff, I'll quickly, they could print that. All we gotta do is put the letter together, within a few days you'll have it. You print it to how many customers, and have it delivered mail or sent with the water bill.
All right, we'll, we'll take care of it.
That's been coming out in the water bill in the past, right? The, um, water bill? It's been coming out in the... That's been coming out in the water bill lately. I mean, so, they're in the water bill... Yeah, that's, that's, that's been coming out of water bill. I've been sending the letters, but I've been testing on the water, so...
Okay.
And I may have some in my file, so I need to look at it and make sure we pass or when there's no with those.
All right, so let's, right now, we need to state that we're ready for, for Mr. Toll, Tolliver?
Tolliver.
Tolliver, to do the next step. Also, we know that there is a letter that needs to go out, so we make sure that letter goes out. Any questions, if we need to have a special open session for, for citizens to come and and express concern, then we can take that next step. But right now, we need to give the okay for you to go take the next step. So the next question would be, given the amount of water, size of our town, what would you, do you know about the range of cost?
Yes, ma'am. You could do it, and that's, that was the concern at the beginning of two thousand nineteen, when we had the time where we were trying to do a pilot test, we were trying to also upgrade your chlorine system. We sent a few proposals back then from two thousand eighteen, I believe. And, and, and that's what controls your system in order to maintain that level. Well, that's got out of hand because water changes, your, you know, the chlorination system is really obsolete.
Right, but based on the levels that you've seen, or the time period that you've seen it, and that would give some idea of the, the amount of chlorine that needs to be added, what would the estimated cost be?
Okay, let me, all right, let me give you a proportion. I can't give you dollars.
That's, I know, I know.
Okay. What you spend on chlorine, you feed, let's say, four parts of ammonia, okay? You only feed one part per million of ammonia. And so that's very low. Does that make sense? Okay. So it's not a lot. I, you, we, years ago, we could have put a system in for anywhere from ten, depending how elaborate you want it, to thirty thousand dollars. Okay? The more, it's like any equipment, there's a difference between a Volkswagen and a Cadillac, right? So...
That we all, we pay for chlorine, we go down the flight.
No, for the equipment that delivers.
That delivers it.
Correct.
All right.
So, you like to do, or it's keep it? I mean, this is staying the most, right?
No, this is more...
Oh, that's, that's, yeah, but, but...
I don't, excuse me, one hundred please. I don't wanna downplay this, okay, the importance, it is very important. But you're not going through that everybody else has not gone through, that they find out that they're failing because everything goes normal, it goes normal, and then all of a sudden, they're failing, and they're failing. And then they turn around and, and, you know, do the proper things, they find their solution in order to do it, whether it's just flushing, putting flushers out there, and that's what we did automatically, once it was approved. We build them, we put them in, and it's working right now. It's working so good that almost catch a chlorine, almost in half of use right now because of the flushers. Does that make sense? Okay, because CR regulation says that we have to meet at the end of the system of a point two residual chlorine. If we're not moving that water, it takes longer, right? So we have to chlorate even more in order to maintain that residual at the end of the system.
But we're still over nine percent, though. Because you said it's supposed to be eighty, we're eighty-nine percent.
Right, no, it's, it's not percentage, it's parts per million.
Parts per million?
Yes.
And you said this was sent out starting in twenty nineteen? So you have all the documentation on this?
Yes.
Can you provide all the documentation?
Okay, what they're citing you is now for twenty nineteen, okay? Right?
They're citing this from there.
Okay, they're citing you for failure from the third quarter of two thousand twenty-one to the second quarter of two thousand twenty-two.
Who was this documentation sent to? Who? I understand the town, but who at the town? Who's name?
It says Albert English, Director.
What do we do now? What do you need from us?
The reason I'm here is to, I was brought here to educate you, to let you know what it is and what is the proper steps to go forward. It's no different than what we've been doing all along, sending you proposals back then for a new chloramine system and possibly allowing us to go ahead and put a chloramine system. Now, we're waiting for a second test to do in two weeks, two to three weeks this month, okay? What I like to do is wait until that test is done, look at both tests that was just done about a week ago, and make a decision then.
I, I get that, Mr. Toll, I'm sorry. I, I get that, Mr. Toll, and I think what the mayor was trying to say is, what would that cost be? So you're telling me, back then, it could've cost us thirty thousand dollars if we wouldn't have this issue right now? So from thirty thousand to the Cadillac? So you gave me the paint, so, like, give me what the Cadillac is, tell me that now.
Cadillac is thirty thousand, though.
So even today, say, thirty thousand?
I would say yes, possibly, yes.
So, Mayor, you got a, a motion to, I mean, I, I understand me saying wait, but I'm...
But the motion is not for the thirty thousand. The motion right now is for you take the next step.
To take action, yes, ma'am.
So that's all I'm, I'm waiting on, to just give him the okay to take the next step.
You can make a motion.
I, I've been trying to do that for about twenty, twenty minutes. So we're gonna go ahead and put a motion on the floor.
I think, Vice President, I'm sorry, I'm scratching my mind. It's just in the process. We need to do this. This is just questions I have for you guys to discuss.
All right, well, I, I did have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the notices went out, but notices going out without us doing anything is really, so did it get better?
Who didn't notice?
Well, no, it was stated that the notices were in the water.
Water bill.
I pointed them.
The court, I mean, I mean, every water bill, they came out.
So from that time to now, it's been fluctuating up and down, is that what you're saying? We didn't put anything in place?
It fluctuated a little bit.
Okay.
Can I present you with the paper, or you wanna see what it looks like, the presentation from DEP, or...
You mean the, the resolution?
No.
The actual, the...
The actual what?
I can get it to you if...
Oh, so, yes, you can.
Is this a copy I can keep?
No, ma'am.
Let me go make a copy.
All right. Okay, so still, we go ahead and make the approval for...
Can you probably wait, we're gonna make this motion?
For you to...
Okay, I, I, like I said, I'm not downplaying, but I want you to know that it's, it's an occurrence. It does happen. The problem is that most people take it and take care of it. By the way, if we were to feed today, you will still not be in compliance until you take four quarters and take an average of them, four quarters, that are passive, and it's, and it's forty and sixty now, to average that out.
Yes, but we want something in place that's gonna, you know, just get us right.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, not just have to be worrying every fourth quarter. So if this is something that...
Well, that's what we're doing right now. We already taking action, and we're gonna continue. In order for it to take any further, like I, I came here and asked for the flushing, I'm asking you, basically, you make the decision how you want to handle this.
Okay, does it need to be a formal motion, or can we just by majority vote, say yes? Yes, ma'am. Do I have to put a motion on the floor, or can I, can we just say?
No, it, it's a motion.
Let's do a motion. All right. I moved that biometrics. Proceed with the, the next steps in making certain that the chemical levels are in line with the state and for the health of the community.
Whatever it takes to do with, with providing what I've told you, based on the...
Yes, but you'll come back with us for, for anything, once you know the cost and any additional contractual opportunities.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion's on the floor.
So move, say.
It's been moved in a second, all of you, we say, yeah. All right, bye, all of you.
Thank you.
My question is, for those of us that had issues with our water in the past, unless we got a water treatment system at the house, or inexpensively, does that help with the water, or is, is...
The normal water systems are usually put at the houses, are usually softers and just, um, filters that are not expensive. There is a filter that you could put on your house to lower your THMs, okay? There is help there, but they're very expensive.
I'm getting this, my guy is saying like, I'm worried. You're saying that you would drink our water?
Yes, I would drink it. I, I, I'll tell you why. This has been going on for many, many years. Think about that. We've been chlorinated our water for a very long time, right? In the United States, came from Europe, we're, we're doing it, that's the only disinfectant that's really, that works and is approved for metrological kill of anything that can enter the water, or it's in the water and say the well becomes contaminated. So, if you think of people in South Florida, where it started, right, with, not where it started, because it's just they have the organics down there, they've been drinking that water all along, and nobody knew it, until EPA decided, they did, did some tests like the gentleman here was talking about, and then they come up with a, like, something, you know, that, okay, you can't go over this amount or that amount, and they come out and they do that. I, and I gotta tell you right now, I'm standing here, and I look at the South Florida, I drank the water.
I have one question. Did you have a problem with fluoride one time? What was the issue about fluoride?
Okay, fluoride is for your teeth, okay? Obviously, if they claim that you drink it, and, and that's a good question, because when I took over, you guys were not feeding fluoride. You have been not feeding fluoride for a long time. But that is nothing to treat the water. That's for the dental...
Right, they're saying they're eliminating, or they was adding more fluoride? What it was doing to...
It was adding fluoride.
Add more, I know one time we had a problem with fluoride, so, okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other question?
No, I think that's it. Thank you. Mr. Singh, are you, any prepared report? All right, Attorney Chuck.
I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, except to say that, and I assume that you guys would be okay with this, you know that there is a pending case which we were made aware of a month or two ago involving a real estate commission, and it turns out that my office has a conflict because unknowingly, I had served as a mediator several years ago in the matter. And so that tomorrow morning at eight-thirty, there is a conference on that matter, and I had consulted with Mr. Jackson to see if he is capable of stepping in and taking over the representation, he said he is, and so without any objection from you guys, it would be my intention that Mr. Jackson take the matter over for purposes of just understanding it and... in a simple way. We're being sued for a real estate commission, based on the law, sovereign immunity. Uh, the school board was also sued, and they got out on the same grounds that I will explain to Mr. Jackson that he should file a motion on. And if he files it, it should succeed, and we should be out of the case. And in fact, the lawyer, um, on the other side, who I know, had suggested that he might just dismiss us because he knows it's likely this motion will succeed. But when I spoke to him this evening, uh, he said that he didn't want to be dismissing us. It would be better from him, uh, pursuing his action against other parties in the case if we filed a motion, um, and that way, we can't be seen as having made an affirmative choice to leave out a party that might be liable. I think the answer is we're not going to be in because of sovereign immunity, but I can't do anything about it, which is why, with your permission, I will hand it off to Mr. Jackson.
Is that a vote that you want us to take, or?
Uh, if, unless you, you can vote, or just nod your head and say that's okay with us. However, as long as, because, uh, under your charter, I'm the chief legal officer, and I could do it anyway, but I'm just not that kind of guy.
And you'll still, even though you'll still be aware of this one law?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alright, uh, Councilman Dennis.
I'm like, having no fun with proceedings of finding Speaker of the House, but I'm just gonna say wild to him. Um, M F K said, "Our lives began to end, and they become silent about things that matter." I wrote that down even before all this stuff started coming out, that was my quote for tonight. Um, first, thank everybody for coming out tonight. Um, thank you for everyone who showed up, you know, get great, I heard great things about it. It was a good time. Um, I'm not gonna hold you long, let's just continue to move forward, let's be transparent. And I, I've heard, I'm not gonna call names, but I've heard someone say tonight that, you know, they didn't do this, or they didn't do that, and all that. But, um, in the words of Attorney Shepherd, he said all the time, um, "Even someone up there did something wrong, don't mean that you continue to do wrong yourself." So, we gotta do right. And unless we start right now, putting things on the right path, we're gonna continue to do wrong. And that's not where we're going, we're not gonna continue to go wrong. So, I just ask that we be more transparent. Um, Mayor and, um, Attorney Shepherd, see emails and reference to the police department. Um, I definitely want to get updates on that, I don't know where we stand with that, with, um, the police department. I see Deputy Chief here tonight, um, I thought he retired on Friday, so... It's just communication things like that, where we can keep disparities down and all that, but we have to address things, and we have to communicate. We have to continue to do things the right way to keep people informed. Um, one of the things I hate is, as an elected official, is I get stuff through the grapevine, and people start calling like, "Y'all doing this and doing that," and I'm like, "What are you talking about?" And I don't know. So, I think if we want to keep disparities down, we gotta utilize the C A O to be that, that vessel to be able to actively communicate within the sunshine and do things the right way. Um, I'm looking forward to moving forward. Um, we have an agency, and I can, I think I can say this in, in this setting. We have an agency of the town that, um, I've been researching and finding things, and we have records that's missing, we have computers that's been wiped. Um, we have major disparities that things to me is borderline looking criminal. So, on tomorrow, I will be having a conversation after, well, Mr. Shepherd, I give you to Thursday, since I know you gotta go through something else, I P. you call Thursday or Friday. But to talk about the disparities, for me to find out that, um, a government system has been wiped, emails have been deleted, um, people having access to emails and government systems, even after being terminated, is a problem. That's a major problem and a major, um, condition that needs to be investigated, and I will be pushing this, because it's not right. Wouldn't, I'm, I'm no longer gonna sit here, and it's not arguing, let me, let me say that right quick. This is not an argument. You see, I've been pretty quiet the last two or three months, and I've just been doing my research. I believe in doing homework and having documentation to prove whatever point that's going for. And for, for this to happen, for someone to have access to a government system after being terminated, we have some major issues going on internally, and it needs to stop right now. So, I hand you on, the time is always right to do what is right. That was Marlook King, have a good night.
Councilman, any questions?
I have no report, but thanks for your information, I'll come next to you.
Councilman Randall.
Oh, yes, uh, thank everyone for coming. Uh, the M F K was, rate was very good, uh, the staff did a pretty good, decent job. Um, also, um, um, not really knowing exactly all the facts, I was very disappointed about hearing that one of our officers were kind of, more or less, not recommended, but basically, um, was kind of asked about some issues that was going on concerning the, uh, the Thanksgiving activity. And the last three council meetings has been brought up with something about turkeys. And I just wanna make the record clear for myself, and also for the citizens. When I had mentioned about Thanksgiving, this was no way to be anything, to take over anything. I do mission work at my church. For the last ten years, we have had Thanksgiving drives. We also have a couple more, we had them at the school. This is a flyer that went out in the community for Eatonville, alright? I showed him the flyer at the council meeting, I have a couple flyers over here. And I want everyone to know, there's no way in the world, with no intentions to steal or take the reputation or recognition for turkeys. I have heard the word turkey mentioned again tonight. The event that we put on, everyone, because I was on, because I'm on the council, it's not saying that this was for Eatonville City Council doing this. This is for everybody, everyone in the town of Eatonville was welcome, okay? Um, and I wanna imply is this, if the mayor, if you had already things set up for turkeys, that's not the same turkeys that I have. Mine was in conjunction with Second Harvest Food Bank, because we're nonprofit. This effort is put on by churches, and it says here, nonprofit organizations. Those are community sponsors, and I did list the town of Eatonville, but there's no way, as a logo, as you had stated in the last meeting, I do not have a logo on this. You yourself took upon yourself to make a, uh, an announcement over the system to all the citizens about the Thanksgiving drive, and also you included St. Lawrence, okay? I never, never had done anything during that particular time to take anything away from you. You even said at the last meeting that you had gift cards. I assumed that this was a great effort. You do the cards, the nonprofit, we do the turkeys and the food. In fact, the sponsors who work with me had said, "This will be a great venue, because this is the first time in the last couple years that we did not have an event on the same day." Last year, we had it on the same day. You yourself, as well as Councilman Washington, and also Torres Mack, and, uh, Councilman Rodney Daniels, when we had things at the school and at the community center, you all came, and you all participated. It was the same kind of event, nothing changed. So, I'm kinda like up to here about hearing about turkeys. This had nothing to do with the town of Eatonville, so you should have already had a plan, which Sharonda had mentioned to you before during the summer, what are we gonna do about Thanksgiving? And you said, "We'll wait until that time comes." Well, the time came, and you didn't do anything. So, then you waited until the last minute, so now you're telling people something about, "I did something with the turkeys." And then, not only that, just to add to this, and I'm gonna bring it out, I was told by several people in the community that Officer Magnitai was chastised by you about something concerning the Dick Johnson Center. He was taking orders from Chief. Chief knows that every year, I pay for the officers to be there. This was the first year that I didn't pay, because, I assume, because you took it over by announcing, and you came to the event with your cards for the community event. I did not say anything to you about it, I opened it up, I welcomed you with open arms, and it was no issue. I didn't know it was an issue. And then later, on that, uh, thing that we did, the, uh, the who at the church, the only thing that I did, I asked Mr. English, "Is it okay for us to have two cones?" When I came back, the cones were gone. I was told by the crew that you had instructed them to take the cones from the church. Was no problem whatsoever. And I didn't, I did use protocol, you always talk about administrative. When you say administrative, you're talking basically about me. I went through administrative. Mr. English is your direct report, he reports to you. When he came and gave me those cones, I had no idea that he even asked you or didn't ask you. He said that you told him, "From now on, you get my permission." Just for two cones for the church, and you're gonna have a fit about that? But you know what, it all worked out, it all worked out. And Chief, you should be straight enough to tell the mayor, so that way, we don't have to take things out on Mr. McIntyre, he should not suffer and lose a career opportunity because of something such as silly as this, does not make any sense whatsoever. And it's not right, and it's not fair to him, and it's not fair to the people of the town, that he loses an opportunity because you're not telling the people the truth. And this is a truth that actually happened. I've just been holding him back, waiting for my opportunity to explain my side. It had nothing to do with this, rot nation paid for the turkeys. Did you contact anybody? I don't think you did. So, you know, so you need to let this go.
Alright, done.
Thank you.
That's it. Vice Mayor.
Hello, everybody, I'm concerned, concerned about a lot of things, and concerned about this water situation. Uh, Eville, ever since I was little boy, throughout here, has always had concerns with water, but, you know, you just never, you just feel like it's just, it's no funny, and, you know, you feel like, our, the administration, that time, they take care of it. Tell you right now, I'm just, Mr. Singer, just, you know, it's at the point right now that I don't even wanna drink, and I just wanna go get bottled water, maybe shower with it, but I, I don't feel comfortable drinking. And I'm just being honest, you know, we always know that there was issues, but not to the point of it's, hear my young man here, that's, you know, say that he would drink it. I don't know, I don't know. I just feel like I'm, I'm gonna be on the safe side, and just for my family's sake, probably get bottled water, and we haven't, I, I have a conflict that we're taking care of this issue. You know, you, you, I'm disheartened, you know, I'm not, I'm not surprised. You know, that letters have gone out, and nothing was done, you know, to this department did. You know, when we sent emails, and they don't get responded, what they say, what's wanted to be? Not my duty to come up here and chastise anybody, I'm trying to stand by the motto of reprimand, raising up the reprimanding process, what Marie say, you know, I, I don't wanna be one of those, like I keep saying, trying to change the narrative. But I am concerned, I'm that, I, I, I am concerned that, according to Councilman Daniel Harland Davis, that a computer can be wiped out and files gone, and we, as a board, won't agree on that. That, that's, that's wrong, that's, 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 that's criminal. A computer wiped, files gone, and we can't agree on that? That's why, that's why we would never see eye, I, I think I said that before in a couple of sessions, said, "Why you guys can't get along?" Because you can't agree on what's right and wrong. Taking files from a government place, wiping computers, that's wrong. Now, for anybody up here to say it is not, or try to defend it, then we have a problem, and that's why we can't see eye to eye. But I guarantee, somebody will say, "Oh, they justified it in a way." Maybe say he had the right to take them, I, I don't know, all I know is it's wrong. We have more pressing issues, that's one, the water is one definitely. And just, I, I don't know, I, you know, I thank Reverend Creed for bringing us all the time, you know, 'cause, 'cause we need it. Um, I, you know, wasn't a big light of the parade, but I think we just do that, it's too serious right now with water and files missing out of the, out of the government, uh, facility. And in the mayor and her report, I would like to hear what she has to say about the files and the computer being wiped, and the files missing. Thank you, have a good night.
Pity me, everyone. Um, I, I first wanna just say thank you to Janita Robinson, and every staff member that stepped away from their jobs, just to get accountable for some portion of getting that parade. Uh, I wanna thank every volunteer, every sorority, every fraternity, um, every citizen that helped. I wanna thank all the sponsors and parade participants, and all the attendees and residents. Um, it was a successful parade, and we hope that the next one's better. Zora Fest, I anticipate a great Zora Festival, which is the highlight of this town every year, whether we want it or not. I do not see you as an enemy, Mr. Theory, but somewhere along the line, we kinda got twisted what working together looks like. Um, and I also prefer the street festival atmosphere versus being pushed off the street onto the land. But again, whatever doesn't work in that planning process, let's make it better, so that we don't have to keep going through this process, this part of it. We'll always get to a snag, so hopefully, we can, um, iron those out. The World Conference of Mayors and the H B T S A Conference will be here in the chambers on the twenty-eighth of January at eight o'clock. All council members are invited, you'll receive a written invitation, hopefully, this week. Um, but, but please know that you're getting an oral invitation right now for everyone, every council member. Thank you, Ms. Councilwoman, thank you, Councilwoman Randall, for all that you do for this, this community. Every year, I know that you volunteer with St., St. Lawrence, and, and you give to the community. It's not about the turkey. It's almost embarrassing to say that word now. It is about administration versus registration. The no was not in helping, the no was by keeping that line drawn tight. I had stated that it is confusing when staff are being asked or told or directed to do something. That violates the charter, I've said right here, and I've said it. And I've said it more than once. So, a no has at some point just be a no regardless. Um, but again, it, it's not about the turkey, I promise, nothing about the turkey. And I'm clean. That is it. Thank you, and welcome back. Um, I move that procedure.
Sure.
It's been moved all day. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Sure.
Alright, I'll say it, is there, is there a second, I'll press the I.
Alright, alright.